Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to tonight's council meeting of Tuesday, May the 11th, 2021. We're going to start off tonight's council meeting as we always do with the performance of Oh Canada. And for those of you that would like to stand, I'm going to first read the background on our performer for this evening. Performers named Sibilla Malekzade. Sibilla is six years old. She attends Mary Ward School. She loves school, just like Counselor Strange. She also loves Taekwondo and singing at Stanford United Church. So if I could get our IT department and our clerks department to help us by putting this up on the screen, and we're going to hear the rendition of Oh Canada by Sibilla Malekzade.
Hi, City Council. I hope you enjoyed this video. Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise thy true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Guard, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Hey, that was great. Wow. Wow, that was fantastic. If, if you happen to be watching Sibilla, or your family's watching, we want you to know, we're really proud of you. We really like that personal touch at the beginning, saying hello to City Council. And what a great job. And folks, she's six years old. What a, what a terrific job. So well done. There's a bright future for you, Sibilla. Thank you very much. Okay, now, folks, we move along to adoption of the minutes from our April 20th meeting, motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. There's no discussion. We'll call the vote. All votes in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Do we have any disclosures of a pecuniary interest? Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a conflict of interest on 7.4 Queen Street Promenade, my husband's former employer.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for that. Any other disclosures of counsel? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move on to, of course, everybody, especially Counselor Cario's favorite part of the meeting. I just see Wayne Campbell's ring. I don't know if that means suffering, or what that means. I thought that was your way of saying it's not your favorite part of the meeting. So suffering. But anyway, we'll start off with the obituaries. Our condolences, Maria Bryce, the mother of Andrew Bryce of our planning department passed away. Bradley Jenkins, stepson of Vince Moyer of our fire services department, and Kenneth Hodgson, father of Roberta Hawkins of our finance department. So our condolences go to all those that have lost their loved ones. This week is Nurses Week. Thank you to all the nurses caring for the patients, and especially now during the pandemic. It's been a real challenging time, and it's, it's a real time that we've come to appreciate more than ever, the hard work that you do and the tireless efforts that you put in. And in honor of all nurses, tomorrow, which will be May the 12th, the Falls will be illuminated blue to honor and respect all nurses. And that also supports Florence Nightingale's birthday. So it's a neat tribute for tomorrow night. Thank you to the Illumination Board. We are really excited. This council's been strongly supporting the new station, Fire Station Seven, that was built, and we had a virtual grand opening on Lundie's Lane. I'm happy to announce officially that it's open. I'd like to thank you, give a thank you to our communications team. They put together a video because they knew we couldn't do the traditional opening, so we had to do a virtual opening. I want to thank Chief Bootleer for all of his hard work in bringing and moving the ball forward. Prior to him, of course, of course, Chief Lee Smith, who is instrumental in getting the discussion going, and of course, our incoming chief, Joe Zambito, for all of his hard work on the ground. I know he's been involved in every step of the way to make sure this was done right. And boy, what a state-of-the-art facility. And I know that we're the envy of all of the fire departments. So thank you and congratulations to all of our Niagara Falls firefighters. I'd ask our clerk and our IT department if they play the video, please.
Welcome to the virtual grand opening of the city Niagara Falls Fire Department's newest addition. Station Seven is a state-of-the-art fire station built for the future of fire service in our community. The location of Station Seven here on the west side of the city will extend our high level of fire service with prompt response times to expanding community in this area, including the new hospital to open in the near future. Thanks to Mayor Diodati and our members of council, we received the support necessary to construct and properly staff the Niagara Falls' newest fire station. This 12,000 square foot building features modern design elements, the latest technology, and is fully accessible to accommodate a diverse and inclusive department. The station has two truck bays and will house Pumper Seven, but has been built to accommodate future needs for additional fire apparatus as the city continues to grow. I would be remiss to not mention and give proper recognition to Deputy Chief Joe Zambito, the city's incoming fire chief, for his role as the project manager. We're standing in the emergency operations center. This room is the hub for any emergency that this city will face. State-of-the-art, going to serve this community for years. Some people would have to be thanked for this. First of all, Chief Lee Smith, who started this project back in 2010 with the fire master plan. Chief Bootleer, who had the vision to keep pushing it through council, getting the staffing plan done and moving it forward. And Deputy Chief Zambito, who was instrumental in overseeing this entire project. This is going to be funded completely by development charges. That means new development paid for this station. It did not come on the backs of the taxpayer, and we're so proud of being able to do that for the citizens of Niagara Falls. Are we ready? All right. Five, four, three, two, one. It's official. Woo-hoo. This new fire station is an investment in the safety and the health of our residents, and it'll be an integral part of our community. Thanks for joining the virtual grand opening.
Eight five three zero Lundie's Lane, Niagara Falls Fire Station Seven officially open.
Thank you very much to our communications department led by Dale Morton. Terrific work. Isn't that great? So professional, so well done. Moving on, vaccination clinics will take place and continue to take place at the McVain Community Center. The next day at the community center will be May the 29th. And also with the incoming excess vaccines that we've been receiving, there could be some added dates as well. So we're thrilled. And for anyone that's been there to get their vaccine or talk to anyone who's got their vaccine, it's very organized, like a well-oiled machine. You get in, you get serviced, you leave. It's so well done. And so nice to see our staff working so well with our regional public health to make this happen. If you need to find out information, go to niagarafalls.ca or Niagara Regional Public Health website for the latest groups of eligible residents to be vaccinated. The farmer's market opens this Saturday, this Saturday from 7:00 AM till 1:00 PM at the McVain Center in the parking lot. So if you get a chance, venture out. It's very, very popular. People are happy with their temporary digs as we build the new, new farmer's market and culture centers. So we're really thrilled about that. So come out this Saturday. Completion of the Whirlpool Road pedestrian bridge. Now, just before we play the video, just want to say that this Millennium Trail, we've been extending and we're almost finished from north to south. And what a beautiful trail. People are just so proud. And you talk to anyone who goes on there, I mean, the, the return of songbirds, wildflowers, wild coyote, well, wild coyotes, wild turkeys, is what I meant to say. And real neat, great space to get fresh air, exercise, and sunshine. And this latest section is going to link up directly to the Niagara Parks Trail, one of the gems in Niagara that people just love. And one of the things in the works, it's not, we're not there yet, the parks had to delay by a year, is the building of the roundabout, which will take place at Whirlpool Road at River Road, which is going to make it even nicer. But the city will be ready when they do. So the contractors Rankin Construction, ironically, Tom Rankin used to work for the city of Niagara Falls in our municipal works department back in, back in the seventies. And as a matter of fact, his picture's still on the wall outside of Eric Nichols' office. So I, I rib Tom from time to time, and he likes to tell me old stories of back in the day. So we'll save those for another time. Anyway, this bridge and extended part of the trail is expected to be open to the public early this summer. We've got a lot of great social media feedback from people really excited to use it. I'd ask our IT staff and clerks if you could please play the video. Again, more fine work by our communications department, so that everyone doesn't have to be everywhere at all times. So they bring the video right to us so we can see the progress. So well done. This past Saturday was clean sweep. We had 121 volunteers collect more than 250 bags of garbage. The weather was good. We had students taking advantage to get their community service hours. This year was a little different with online registration, and we didn't gather in groups, but people cleaned the garbage in their neighborhoods, the neighborhood trail, the neighborhood park, and Timmy's cards were provided to all the volunteers that submitted their photos showing them doing the work. I'd ask Counselor Peter Angelo, you'd like to comment to that?
Yeah, Your Worship, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Park in the City Committee, who organizes this event every single year. And we try to organize it twice a year, once in the spring and then once in the fall. I also wanted to mention as well, Your Worship, that I did see in the paper today that Walker Brothers was going to allow free dumping to any community who, who goes through like a clean sweep, where they pick up garbage. So I wanted to say thank you to Walker Brothers. It's very nice of them. And, you know, hopefully, we can get more support to, to basically clean up areas that, you know, that are littered. But the Park in the City does a good job taking the lead, Your Worship.
Yeah, they do a fantastic job. And, and it's just great that because of COVID, some would have said, ah, we're not going to do it this year. But they didn't do that. They just did a pivot, and they said, we'll do it virtually, and we'll do it in neighborhoods. And we still 250 bags of garbage later. What a great move. So yeah, thanks to the Park in the City Committee, to Jeff Garashi, our staff liaison, and all the people involved in that. And to our council reps as well for being a part of that committee. So who are reps? Are yourself, Counselor Peter Angelo, and Counselor Strange. Right. Okay. And thank you to you too, as well, for your liaison with the committee. Street sweeping, folks, is, I've been asked this many times, is going to start next Monday. So in six days, and it's gonna, the entire city is going to be blitzed in two weeks. So please get word out through your social media channels, or when you're talking to people, try to get your cars off the road, your basketball nets, your hockey nets, just for the next two weeks, starting next week, next Monday. Clear the road, because you know what happens? They claim around the parked car, and then you got a pile of stone dirt and rubble sitting there, and they're not going to come back. So it's incumbent upon us to not leave our cars out on the streets during the day, starting May 17. So the contractors will be doing all the subdivisions rural, and they're going to swarm the rest of the city. And the main goal is to get it all done before all the stuff washes into our catch basin. So we'll be done before the end of May. The next council meeting will be Tuesday, June the 1st, and that ends our most favorite part of the meeting. So moving on to presentations, we are going to move on to 6.2 Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. And on behalf of MYAC, we've got Salani Sharma and Arul Delwaria will be making a virtual presentation at council proposing a regional youth advisory committee. So folks, we will offer the meeting to you now.
Good afternoon, Mayor Diodati and members of City Council. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Arul Delwaria.
And I'm Salani Sharma.
And we are the co-chairs of the Niagara Falls Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee's And we are the co-chairs of the Niagara Falls Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee's Youth Voice Subcommittee.
Passionate about amplifying student representation, we're looking forward to discussing our idea for a regional youth advisory committee, ARIAC, with you all here today.
Receiving support from the Niagara Falls, Welland, and Niagara-on-Lake MIACs, we envision this committee as an impactful opportunity to provide a platform for student voice at a regional level while both connecting and strengthening existing youth leadership groups across the Niagara region.
Serving on the Niagara Falls Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee for the past three years, we both recognize and appreciate your steadfast support for student voice. Our experience on MIAC has solidified an understanding that I'm sure you all share as well, that student voice is best represented from a diverse and collaborative front. We are confident that the proposed regional youth advisory committee will support and promote student involvement and leadership across the Niagara region.
The committee will facilitate collaboration between student leaders in each municipality, acting as an outlet for advocacy as well as an opportunity for youth to network and benefit from the sharing of experiences and perspectives.
By sharing updates on ongoing youth-focused initiatives across the 12 municipalities and discussing youth-related issues alongside community partners, ARIAC will provide students with takeaways to share and strengthen their own organizations and involvements within their community. ARIAC will also be able to take on region-wide projects supported from a municipal level.
Creating a diverse, yet united voice for students across the Niagara region. ARIAC will act like a bridge between students and regional government to gain a better perspective on youth concerns and provide youth-informed solutions at a regional level.
As proposed, ARIAC would comprise a maximum of 15 voting members, one representative from each of the 12 municipalities in the Niagara region, and three elected executive members. To promote student involvement, each voting member will have an alternate that may assume their role and responsibilities in the event of a vacancy.
The application and appointment process will consist of two stages, starting with high school principals. Principals will be asked to nominate two students per municipality represented in their school student body to be interviewed by the ARIAC staff liaison. The staff liaison will then appoint one voting and one alternate student per municipality to ARIAC. A unique aspect of ARIAC is its ability to include each municipality, introducing collaboration between youth from areas with fewer student leadership opportunities and developed groups alike.
Moreover, non-voting student representation from REACT Niagara, which is a branch of the Niagara Region Public Health Department, and student trustees from the District School Board of Niagara and Niagara Catholic District School Board will be invited to attend committee meetings. Two adult committee staff members or assigned representatives of the regional chair's office can also serve as facilitators and liaise with the committee.
We recognize that gathering students across the Niagara region may pose transportation challenges. However, this year has undoubtedly shown us the power and flexibility of online conferencing. We hope to connect students virtually with the possibility of hosting the occasional committee meeting at regional headquarters.
Thank you for your time. We would be happy to address any questions or comments you may have.
There we go. Thank you very much, folks. That was terrific. Just before we do, I just wanted to acknowledge that Arul's mom and amica used to work for us at the city here. Thank you, Council Peter Angelo, for pointing that out. And his dad used to work at the region. He's the CAO in Thorold now. So it's great to see. I know some great Niagara Falls residents. So that was terrific. Do we have any questions or comments of City Council for our Mayor's Youth Advisory? Oh, yeah, Counselor Strange?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. And I'm on the MIAC as a council rep, and you know, they teach me a lot. I don't teach them a lot. They teach me a lot. And they're going through a little bit of stressful, a few of them are going through stressful times right now as they're waiting to see which university they're going to be going to next year. They have their top five. I always talk to them, so a little bit stressed out, a few of them. But a great idea brought from them to hold a regional youth advisory committee. And I think it's a great connection to keep our municipalities and our region together and give opportunity for students who may not be part of a MIAC in their municipality to get part of a regional one. So I think it's an amazing idea, and hopefully maybe in a couple of years, and it's branching out from here, which is awesome. And hopefully in a couple of years, we'll be able to do a provincial one if there's one not already. But when, if we need to make a motion, I'm prepared to do that after if there's any other questions or that they have for MIAC students.
Okay, thank you for that. We've got Counselor Thompson up next.
Well, I think this is a natural move to have the region committee with the youth. I remember in 1979, when I was running the first time for mayor, I had some young people, "How can we get involved?" And that's how it all started. We formed the first committee in 1979. So this is the next appropriate meeting to have the entire region involved. And they've provided so much youth information over the years. It's just been fantastic. So I would be happy to move the motion to approve that.
So we've got a motion by Counselor Strange, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that the two things that we received their report, and secondly, that we support the request to present to the region. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So any questions to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Okay, that's great. Well, thank you very much to our Mayor's Youth Advisory. Thank you for the update. I couldn't see you on my screen. I don't know, could anybody else see them, or you could?
No.
Oh, okay, okay. We missed, would like to have seen your smiling faces, but we did a Zoom with you last week with Counselor Strange, and I'm glad that you taught him a lot, because he might need a few more sessions. So thank you very much. Appreciate all your input for all that you do, your leadership. And we know it's a stressful time, and I know because I've got a couple of kids in that exact same situation. It's frustrating, but we're going to get through it. With the good leadership, we're going to get through it. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good night. So we're going to take a step back. I, by mistake, stepped over my good buddy, Justin. Sorry about that, Justin. I did all that talk and video about the fire station. I thought, I kind of thought we were done. I didn't realize. So my apologies. So Fire Station 7, we've got a request to present by Justin Canestraro, our president of our firefighter, Professional Firefighters Association. And I'd like to welcome, oh, there's a smiling face. Welcome to the call, or the meeting.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I figured you skipped over me because I showed you up with the Matthews jersey the other day, but we'll talk about that a different day. But to the mayor, CAO, and members of council and senior staff, I wanted to take the opportunity today to address all of you and say how much we, and when I say we, I mean myself as the president of the Niagara Falls Professional Firefighters Association and 141 members that I represent, for moving forward with the construction of Station 7 and the proper staffing of our trucks. I would obviously, if you know me, I'm an in-person kind of guy. I'd rather have been there in person to shake hands and talk to you guys. But with what we got going on today, this is the best way we can do it. I really appreciate you guys slotting me in for some time here. Many of you know the length of the time that we've been discussing the possibility of opening this new station in the ever-growing and rapidly changing west end of our city. And regardless of how long it took, we've arrived today. And even though it's not in the nicest spot, I'm actually in Station 7 right now as we are open and rolling calls, so it's great. And again, myself and 140-plus members are grateful that even during these uncertain times, you all stood behind the decision to continue with the build and the proper staffing of this new station. And we can't thank you anymore for that. I really need to hammer that point to you guys. It could have been a very easy decision for you during these uncertain times, both economically and socially, to put this build on hold and to wait until times become more clear. By doing what you did, you supported this project and showed us your commitment and investment to public safety and firefighter safety, which I'm sure you can imagine is very important to me and the members that I represent. Our ever-growing city adds new challenges to our ongoing small city with big city issues. You'll hear us say that a lot in the fire service. With our department built to cover approximately eight, a city of approximately 80,000 plus, that can skyrocket into the hundreds of thousands during any given day in the tourist season. This station, which you again supported, will only help provide and keep up the level of service that we are dedicated to giving to our public who live here in the city and our visitors. This project was 10 years in the making. We've heard that at least. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the past presidents of my local association and their executive teams, as well as my executive team currently, for the work that we did to make this happen as well. We worked hand-in-hand with our past chiefs and our current chiefs to ensure that this would move forward by helping work with different consultants, with answering questions and information, and also at points using our union dues to pay for GIS studies through the International Association of Firefighters, which helped work in concurrent with the GIS studies done with the services provided to the city. I really want to stress that working-together part. Though on some points, we may not see eye to eye, and we may be on different sides, we're both here, and we're all here for the same thing, to protect the public in our city and to continue providing the safest opportunity and the safest work environment for our firefighters. And we've seen that by your investment in Station 7 and the staffing. I really, again, want to fire it home, the point of firefighter safety and how it was not lost. We dedicate our careers to protecting the lives of the public, and unfortunately, some of us make the ultimate sacrifice. We have a great monument at our headquarters, which I'm sure you've seen, and I make many speeches in front of there where I have to talk about the people that we have lost. One of the things I mentioned is how we have numerous empty spaces on that monument, and that scares me because I know one day they'll have to be filled up. But your commitment, again, and your investment to the public and firefighter safety will hopefully keep some of those spaces empty for a little bit longer, that we have the proper staffing to keep us safe moving forward. I want to thank all of you for your continued support, for investing in firefighter and public safety, and for continuing to offer us the tools and support that we need to continue the reputation that the Niagara Falls Fire Department has in this province of being one of the most progressive and one of the most well-trained departments in all of Ontario. Thank you, and I hope all you and your family stay safe as well.
Thank you very much, Justin. Well said. Appreciate your positive feedback. And you're right, we're all in this together. So we got there. The main thing is we got there. I've got Counselor Peter Angelo. We'd like to speak.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I just think it's very important to thank Justin for being here. I thank you for your genuine words. It's nice to know that the firefighters are very happy. I think above all else, Your Worship, safety is paramount, especially when you get into firefighting and the services that we provide. The council recognized the need that we had in the west end, and logistically, you know, we needed to have a presence over in the west end. So it's great to see that, you know, we were able to provide that service and moving forward. It's going to be a great addition to our city. So, Justin, I really appreciate you coming here and telling council your feelings. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. All right, well, if all counts for Strange?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Justin. Yeah, I think it was many years that we're looking at this, and I don't know if we, you guys must have seen the crystal ball before us, because you can see the population growth behind the new fire station. It's unbelievable going towards our new hospital. So I couldn't think of a better location for it. So the service is going to be much faster, especially to those new builds. So thank you, and thank you to all council for getting this done.
Thank you for that. Counselor Strange? Right, Mr. Clerk, do we need to, is there an action we should take in this case? Okay, look for a motion to receive presentation from our president, El Presidente. That's Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you for that. And Justin, I'm still working on that suggestion you put in the suggestion box. By mistake, you put your name on the bottom of it, so I know it was from you. Justin Canestraro Day. I'm working on it, so just give me some time. Appreciate you being here tonight.
I know you can make it happen. Thank you for having me, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, so moving along to reports, item 7.1, the Niagara District Airport. We've got something here on the floor, and I'd like to ask our CAO, Ken, if he's, hopefully he's made it home, if he'd be able to walk us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council is aware we've been working for several years to look at either uploading of the Niagara District Airport or some other arrangement. The three host municipalities, which is Niagara Falls, St. Catharines, and Niagara-on-Lake, have all worked with the Airport Commission. And the report in front of you is to develop an RFP that would be issued to gauge private sector interest in operating the Niagara District Airport so that that would eliminate the cost of operations on the backs of the three host municipalities. The report is pretty straightforward. We'll be going out for an RFP in the months, the next month or so, and subsequently, we'd have reports back to our respective councils. I can tell you that St. Catharines and Niagara-on-Lake councils have both approved the recommendation that's in front of you tonight. And Niagara-on-Lake has a little bit higher interest simply because they also own the land. And their council has agreed to having the land as part of this arrangement as a lease as well. So that's good news for the city of Niagara Falls. And, Mr. Mayor, the motion is in front of you, and staff would appreciate approval of the motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. CAO. Counselor Thompson, and then Counselor Loco.
Well, we've been waiting a long time. We thought the region was going to take over because everybody benefits from the airport in Niagara. And they were willing to take on the responsibility rather than the three municipalities. So I think this is a great solution to the problem and have the private sector take it over and develop it and expand it and put it into a first-class airport and utilize it for tourism flying in here also in the future. So I would be happy to move the motion to approve the report.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Loco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the pleasure of serving as a commissioner on the Niagara District Airport Commission, and I see a lot of opportunities for our community in the airport, and I would like to second the motion.
Thank you for that. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I'm happy to support the recommendation. I just had a question, whether it was for our rep or for Mr. Todd, I guess whoever goes to the meetings. And I understand that the airport is perceived as a catalyst when it comes to economic development. The runway that we have at Niagara District doesn't allow larger passenger planes to land. So in terms of expansion in the future, I was just wondering, is that part of the RFP? And I guess my thoughts are around, are, like, is our vision for what the airport going to be the same as the group that we're going to choose in the RFP? Is that part of the RFP? Because in looking at it, I know it talked about how much money the airport is at a deficit every year, and then it talked about general improvements of $10 million. I can't imagine that the $10 million would be to expand the runway, which is what would be required in order to expand the airport. So I just wanted to make sure, just because it's a very long lease, it's a 20-year lease. So if we give it to someone and they don't have the same vision in mind to actually expand the airport and allow cargo and passenger planes, you know, to start landing, then we've kind of given away that opportunity for 20 years, so.
That's a great question. Great question. We'll get our CAO if you could jump in on that one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the short answer is yes. There's been a couple of things that have happened recently. There was a master plan that was undertaken, I believe, in late 2019 into 2020. And there was also a business case to look at expansion of opportunities at the airport. Those items I know have been discussed at the commission level. And they have included such things as runway expansion, hangar expansion, other economic opportunities that could take place on the site. So that is part of it and will be presented as part of the RFP process.
That's good news, Your Worship. I just want to make sure that whoever we choose, their vision is aligned with ours.
That's great. Counselor Cario?
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to mention, Counselor Thompson made some comments that it was good for tourism. Well, Your Worship, it's good for all industry. And manufacturing and any other commercial industry would love to have an airport in their, in their town to fly in parts, to fly in people. And can you imagine if the runway was big enough that we could see a plane coming in with our own vaccine supply landing in St. Catharines?
That'd be awesome. That'd be awesome. There's, there's huge opportunities with having an airport. And we've, we've got some really, really good, sound research on the importance of an airport for developing an area and a region. And although we've got Toronto, that's mostly international. And Buffalo, well, when times like this, when the borders close, it's not very helpful. Then you've got Hamilton, which is largely cargo but some passenger. We realize that we need some control over our own destiny. And we have spoken in the past with some other, with different airlines that have showed an interest in us. We know it's a valuable asset, so we just want it to be more than people just playing with their hobby planes. Turn it into something that's going to create jobs and investment and be good for our economy. So, you know, airports are not easy to come by and we're really fortunate. And should be noted too, the land, although it's owned by the town of Niagara Lake, it can only be used as an airport. If at any time they decided they did, did not want to do that, it goes back to the federal government. So it's a great partnership. I'm glad we stayed in it. Thorold used to be in this partnership as well at one time. But we see the future. We understand the importance of it. And what a great opportunity. So let's see what's out there. So if there's no further comments, we've got motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor LaCoco, that we move the two recommendations that we are going to move to a request for expressions of interest, request for proposals for our Niagara District Airport. We'll call that vote. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Moving on to item 7.2, delegation of authority under the Municipal Act for the tax relief application for sickness or extreme poverty to the Assessment Review Board.
I'll move the report, Your Worship.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Campbell, that this report be moved. I didn't know if, if, Mr. Levens, if you wanted to just very briefly, just let us know for the public what this is exactly, just very briefly, high level?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor. Basically, under the Municipal Act, Section 357, a taxpayer can apply to have a reduction or cancellation or refund of property taxes due to sickness or extreme poverty. And that council would have the authority to say yea or nay. And quite honestly, these are not your most straightforward cases. They require people's personal health and financial information. So we're just asking council to delegate the, the authority to the ARB, who specialize in, in adjudication of these, these applications.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that. Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if we could make this information available to our residents and to any of the outreach services such as Project Share, Niagara 201, Niagara Falls Community Outreach, tax, income tax preparers, the library, those types of things. So people are aware that the service is available.
Is the mover and the, and the seconder good with that? Yes? Counselor Peter Angelo? Yes? Counselor Campbell? Yes? Okay, great. Thank you for that. Okay. That's terrific. Thank you, Counselor LaCoco. And for those listening in, ARB Assessment Review Board. So if there's no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Moving on to item 7.3, Brown Road Bicycle Lane.
Move the bike lanes, Your Worship.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange. There are two recommendations that a westbound bicycle be lane be designated on the north side of Brown Road between Kaler and Hackberry Trail. And that no parking restrictions be established on both sides of Brown Road between the same areas. So if there's no further discussion to that, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. That's great. It's nice that we're putting bike lanes all across the city where you'll actually be able to ride without having to get yourself into too much trouble with traffic. Item 7.4, Queen Street Promenade Proposal Update. And I'll go to Eric Nichol, our Director of Municipal Works.
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict. Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict, so I'll remove myself.
Hey, thank you. We've got a conflict with Counselor LaCoco? Mr. Clerk? Okay, great. Mr. Nichol, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So this report is coming to you as a follow-up to our last meeting where council deferred the decision and asked staff to go back and consider further options. So staff have done that and we've, in the report, you'll see there are five options that were considered. Staff have also met with the downtown BIA immediately after the deferral from the last meeting to talk further about some of the possibilities to, to do this differently. So in the report, you'll see a few other options that would, for example, close the road on a longer-term basis, only eat, leave it open for one side of traffic, one-way traffic, just to repurpose the parking lanes for patios. And then the last alternative, which staff are recommending, is a modification to the original request. So what we've learned from our meetings with the BIA is that the, the real driver for the request to install gates and periodically close Queen Street is to have events, to have on-street events and to, to reduce the amount of staff time and the amount of interruptions to the public when those gates are closed and the roadblock is closed. So we've recommended to council that we proceed with a trial period to install the gates for one block and that we do not approve any road closures before 5:00 PM on weekdays. And then we would allow road closures on weekends. And there's a few other stipulations that we'd require, such as the application of a road closure permit and some signage notification and posting on our website. So, Mr. Mayor, I have, I'm more than welcome to answer questions and have any other comments that are addressed, if you like.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Counsel? I've got Counselor Inoney.
I'm through you to Mr. Nichol. Mr. Nichol, it says a couple of times that you met with the Chair of the BIA, the Vice Chair, and the Executive Director. Did you meet with any of the people, any of the businesses that are in opposition to this? Because the, I, I've had many, many emails in the past couple of days once the report came out saying, wait a minute, they talked to the exact body who made decisions that we don't agree with. So did you talk to any of the businesses who believe it's going to adversely affect them?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We did not directly communicate with those, those residents. We did, however, receive, review all of the correspondence. And we feel that the recommendation we're putting forward addresses those, those concerns. You know, we, we can only be expected to work with the BIA and the BIA is expected to represent the membership. So we didn't feel it was appropriate to reach out to each and every business. We didn't have the timeframe that would allow us to do that. And again, we still feel that the recommendations will provide a compromise to everyone in this situation.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with you and I'm not going to support the recommendations on the, on the, on the report. But I do have a question. For all of those people who, who are saying, you know, last year they closed the street and there was no event, the roads were blocked off and nothing happened. In our report here, on the BIA, from the BIA correspondence, it says, due to COVID, they're going to be reducing the events because of the, the new state home order. So I'm kind of curious. You've reduced the times, you've tried to, you've tried to make some happy compromise. But how does, how do the business owners who are not in favor of this going to know when there's an event? And, and can the street be closed when there is no event? So if they apply for an event permit, the street gets, the gates get closed and there's no event?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Great questions. And, and first of all, that is the benefit of this type of installation they're proposing. Last year, when we closed the road with barriers, it, it was inefficient and, you know, impossible for us to remove those concrete barriers on a regular basis. So the, the, the approach going forward, if this is approved, is that the BIA would be required to publish and to communicate every event to the whole membership and to notify them ahead of time. The city would have the authority to approve a special event road closure. And we would do that within a week's notice of the request from the BIA. And we would also include signage on the day of to, to let motorists know that the road would be closed and what time it would be closed and for what duration. So by, by a combination of the BIA communicating to their membership, the city posting on our website and providing that onsite communication, we feel we can capture most of that communication out to the public. And again, this is going to be specifically for events. So if the BIA requests an event, we expect they're hosting an event. If they tell us they're going to cancel it, then we would require the gate to remain open.
So, Mr. Nichol, for the businesses that aren't, aren't happy with the way this is playing out. And when you read all of their correspondence and counsel, I'm sure, read all the correspondence that came in. They're, they are contending that they are not being communicated by their BIA. They don't like to be called naysayers because everybody wants the downtown to, to go forward and to thrive. But nobody wants to lose their business doing this. And the people who are in opposition to this really believe that this decision is going to cost them revenue and/or the closure of their business. They make it very clear in their emails. So how do you, how does the city plan on enforcing the BIA to adequately communicate with all their members? If their members are saying right now that's not being done?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think there's, there, that communication problem is not something that city staff are really in a position to address. We would, we would be happy to communicate to a mailing list if that was something that they could provide or if we could accumulate a mailing list. We could do that directly, just like we'll post those road closure notices on our website. So I, I, again, we expect that the BIA is the voice of their membership. And, and when I'm hearing correctly, that that may not be how some of the members are feeling. City staff aren't going to take a different approach to this BIA as we take to other BIA's where we expect them to be that voice. So we would, we would still like to work with that BIA to have them and impress upon them that they need to communicate. And perhaps some of the council reps on this call, you know, are hearing this feedback and that's a takeaway as well. But we, I mean, staff can certainly do additional communication if that's what's required. But we can't force the BIA anymore than we already have with the requirement to take out those permits and to post and to notify their membership.
And that's why I asked you that question. Because to make the comment that the BIA will be required to, to communicate to their membership, isn't something we can do? If we could do that, they would be communicating to their membership now. And I mean, all the emails that are sitting before us tonight say the same. The BIA, including the members sitting here, did not receive any financials from the businesses that are in opposition in regards to return on investments from the events last year. Nobody knows what was made. I mean, I emailed the Chair and asked and his answer was, we're getting that information put together. But many people hosted events, so we don't have all that information. Well, that information should have been had before you made the vote to do this. So to me, that's kind of like closing the door behind the horse. I mean, the decision's already been made. So they don't have a lot of faith in us making the right decision. And they don't have a lot of faith in their BIA making the right decision for everybody. But I'm telling council, they are really tired of being called naysayers, negative, and the whole bit because they just do not want to lose their businesses. And, you know, the last council meeting, we had a discussion here in regards to a living wage. And all of you said the same thing. We can't make a decision without financial information. We can't just pull numbers out of the air. We have to have it provided to us. We can't do this. We can't do that. But we voted. We just passed another, we just passed the emergency tax relief. And the people who are going to be applying that are the BIA businesses that had an 85% increase. They don't believe their elected people are listening to them. So I, I made it very clear to them. I would make that statement for them. None of them are on here. Is anybody on here from the downtown BIA to speak to my concerns?
Counselor, are you talking about the council reps? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I've emailed the council reps and asked direct questions and had no response. Some of them have also directed their questions to the council reps and had no response. Our emails are from the Chair or the Executive Director. Are either of them here to answer the questions?
So we don't have anyone requested to speak, Counselor, if that's what you're asking? No.
Okay, thank you. Not surprised.
Counsel, do we have some other? Yes, I got Counselor Cario, Counselor Dubrowski?
Thank you, Your Worship. I like Mr. Nichol's idea of if they have to come to us, this is just to put the barriers or the movable barriers in place. They still have to come back to council in order to close the road. I don't think there's anything wrong with the city notifying, having a list of all of the property and business owners. And when that request comes in, notifying every business owner that, that there's been a request made to close the road on a certain date. I, I would think that that's kind of something that you would do in any street when you were going to close the road, is notify all the businesses or all the people that live on the street. So I think that, Mr. Nichol, has a great idea. That as a, as they come in and suggest that they're asking for a closure on a certain time, that we have the list of all of the businesses and the, the people that live in the area that might be affected. And it's a matter of pushing a button and, and notifying them. And then we've done more than we do for most of the other BIAs at any time. So I like that idea. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Dubrowski?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to Eric Nichol and staff for, for meeting with the BIA quickly after the, the last meeting. And most of the concerns that are outlined in the, in the various correspondence we received at the last council meeting and this council meeting, I, I strongly believe have been addressed. And a lot of the emails that were sent to us are included in the agenda, aren't even relating to the, the street closure or the, the gate installation is really what we're talking about today. And that would allow the street to turn into a promenade in a cost-efficient and timely manner. And I can appreciate all of the, the concern emails from business owners. But most of the concerns that I've read on social media and through email and text messages for me were, were really around the fact that the street was closed for too long throughout the week, sometimes weeks at a time and for too many hours throughout the day. So this proposal, I, I think suitably addresses those concerns with the compromise on an after-five potential of a street closure. Counselor Cario just mentioned that any closure would have to go through council for approval regardless. And, and speaking with the city staff and the Executive Director at the, the BIA, and maybe Mr. Nichol can chime in on this, but that the cost impact to the city to open and close a street eventually or potentially would be minimal. And I, I think what the Queen Street does need is, is foot traffic. And I think it's what we all want. We want to see Queen Street succeed. We want to see more foot traffic on Queen Street. There were some, some concerns around parking. Again, maybe Mr. Nichol can chime in on this. But at the last council meeting, we were provided with, with a digital map of the amount of municipal parking spots that are available even with the two blocks being closed. And, and I think it totaled more than 500 available spots. And, and listen, summer's quickly approaching. Patio season's approaching once again and, and this can only be a large benefit to the bars and restaurants in the area, which rely heavily on volume and, and turning tables. And these days, obviously, indoor capacity rules don't allow restaurants to, to fully capitalize on their volume, on their volume, but their patios do so and they will do so soon, hopefully. But either way, maybe through you, Mayor, to Mr. Nichol, if he could touch on- On their volume, but their patios do so and they will do so soon, hopefully. But either way, maybe through you, Mayor, to Mr. Nichol, if he could touch on some of the parking concerns that? That have been had as well as. Maybe the 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 parking allotment or the parking amounts based on a two-block street closure and maybe also touch on the low impact. And the cost effectiveness to the city in installing these gates for potential street closures in the future.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. The first point I wanted to clarify is that by approving this report. The recommendation is that staff would have the authority to approve the road closure. So we wouldn't. Like to bring it back to council, especially with a summer council schedule. We may not be able to get the requests and, you know, react to a road closure request. So. We'd like the authority to approve the closure and do the posting and the circulations. And we ask for one week's notice from the BIA for that closure. The benefit of the gates is that a road closure can happen in five minutes. And whereas before we would require heavy equipment, barricades, blockage and blockage trucks to do that. So. We would, in in essence, have the BIA do the the physical action of closing the gates when it's ready for their event. Staff would be onsite to supervise and make sure that any vehicles parked there have moved along and out of that site before it's closed. With some advanced signage, that shouldn't really be an issue. So from a cost perspective, the cost to the city to do this. Periodic road closure with gates is very minimal. It just requires some staff oversight, which we would be doing anyways. I can say in terms of parking, the the proposal would reduce the number of on-street spaces by eighteen parking spaces. Staff have taken back some of the comments in previous meetings and the direction to move forward on a downtown parking strategy. And we're moving that forward as quickly as we can. And that might include opening up some additional on-street parking on neighboring streets. But as the councillor mentioned, we still have, even with the loss of our our market, which is going under construction very shortly. And the on-street parking, there's still over five hundred spaces within. A, you know, six hundred meter walking distance. That's about a five to ten-minute walking distance of that road closed area in the downtown. So there is. There is a lot of parking in the vicinity, but it will require a bit of extra. Time to walk there as opposed to parking right at the front gate of those facilities. And again, we will be coming back. We aim to come back in July. With with some recommendations and a bylaw update to allow some more on-street parking elsewhere in the downtown.
Thank you for that, Mr. Nichol. I see councillor Strange is pretty fancy. He's got the digital hand.
I just learned that.
But the bottom of your screen, folks, you'll see at the bottom, there's a raised hand. And if you click on that, it'll.
Exactly. And I learned that from my act, so they taught me. But anyways, you know, it it goes back to last year on Center Street, too, when they wanted to to close Center Street off and and help the patios and some of the. Restaurants. There was a lot of opposition. And they had a great summer when they were able to open up, and it really helped a lot of businesses and even the businesses surrounding. Those those businesses that that didn't have that walking. But anytime you can have. The the foot traffic is awesome. I, you know, I go to Europe, I I see it. It's amazing. You know, you have buskers, you have artists, you have musicians, you have concerts. You have tons of events going on and it's great and people can slow down, you know what I mean? Traffic is an issue, and I understand some of the the businesses surrounding it. People don't like change. And like Center Street, maybe we can, once everything opens, we and if we get this approved, maybe we can bring it back at the end of the summer. And get some feedback from those from those people that were opposed to it, because they might have a totally different. You know. Speck on it, you know what I mean? Like, they might think, oh, man, it's only it's only helping my business. So, you know, people don't like change sometimes, but anytime you can come down there and I think it's going to get a lot of traffic. People are going to know what downtown is now. You know, especially we have the zoning amendments happening down there. It's it's. People have to change sometimes and change is is scary. So maybe if we do pass this, maybe we can, you know, when it's open and and they're doing these events, at the end of the summer, we can bring back. Some comments from those opposed to it and see what maybe they won't be at the end. Maybe they'll like it. Maybe their their business will increase. Who knows, right? So I I I love the idea and I'll, you know, I'll I'll be the first one down there when they close it.
All right. Thank you for that, councillor. I've got councillor Campbell and then Iainoni.
Thank you, your worship. I I I can't help but think that the majority of the negative comments that are being made. Were based on what I feel to be a poor job done last summer. It was permanent. It 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 was really, really difficult to. To support that re-establishment. And I think I can speak on behalf of Chris's part. We were of the mind that it has to be very. Mobile, has to be able to be closed in a two-minute period of time. And I like what Mr. Nichol is saying about. City staff being in control with respect to licensing. I'm expecting to see a huge difference based on us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Got councillor Iainoni, then Dubrowski, and then Strange again.
We have. In the last few meetings, prefaced everything with. We shouldn't be doing something or making change or putting financial pressure on businesses because we're in the middle of COVID. Today, they announced in Hamilton Niagara area, we have we have instances of the. Indian variant, India variant, I think they're calling it. And that's vaccine resistant. I watched all day today with with the press conferences talking about how. All this, all this vaccine movement that we were hoping is going to move us forward. And I and I might say. I am doubly tipped because when I get home, I read AstroZeneca will no longer be given to you people in Canada. And, you know, when they tell you, take the first vaccine that they can give you and you have cancer and immune compromised, you get in line and take the first vaccine, and mine was AstroZeneca. So and I did it telling people, take it AstroZeneca. Now the government's telling us not to do it. So you hear one thing, one day you hear another thing the next day. I'm being messaged by many businesses in your downtown BIA. While you guys are speaking and they want you to know that they are not resistant to change. But this plan is taking away from businesses sustaining their livelihoods during COVID. They want you to understand. It's during COVID. We are in a stay-at-home order now. The stay-at-home order they were saying all day today is going to be extended to June sixth or mid-June. I know we made a comment today that, you know, maybe we can be back to normal the end of June. They're predicting September, October. If this this new variant is as virulent as they say. So when they're asking you, who do you think is coming down? When we are under restrictions and stay-at-home orders and we have to fall, we have a government who changes their mind every other day. How do you actually think an event's going to be handled where people can go down there in the midst of this pandemic? They're not asking you to change your mind because they don't want things to work. They're saying to you, the chair has not spoken in any meetings. And all they do is that these people want answers from their board and their chair. They do. They they are watching it as a this meeting as a group. And we are not addressing the things that they have sent concerns. They said the businesses after five who do not benefit from. There are businesses after five who do not benefit for this with the trickle-down effect. And they want to know what businesses in the area that you're going to close will actually benefit. What businesses will be open after five to benefit from this street closure?
Who are you asking that question of, councillor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, through you to all ask councillor Campbell, Dubrowski, or Eric, because we're not in those meetings. But the people who are messaging me are ticked that they're not in those meetings either.
Okay, so.
I'll respond.
Go ahead, councillor Campbell.
First of all, I don't think there's going to be any events if we're still in lockdown. But we need to move forward with a plan that will be successful when lockdowns end. And we can put it in. It's already in place to move forward. You don't stop running the the city of Niagara Falls because we're on a lockdown. We're moving forward as a BIA. And I appreciate your comments and I appreciate all the people that are writing in. My point is that I think that this is a move forward on behalf of a better downtown. Operational system.
But you don't have a business down there and you're not worried about going bankrupt and you don't see their bottom line because nobody, nobody.
Anyways, if this this lockdown stays in.
But you you increased their taxes.
That's not the. No, we didn't raise their tax. We raised the levy.
Levy eighty-five percent in the middle of a pandemic when they cannot make money. And everybody else we've given a break to.
Councillor, if you could, councillor, please direct your comments to me.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you.
Are you speaking just to me?
I'm. Both councillors, direct your council comments.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The people messaging me would like council to encourage another AGM. Or I believe if if we were talking about any other BIA. They would have come together or we would have. There would be nothing like this on Fallsview Avenue. They would not war with each other and not come together and find some sort of a solution. It would. It wouldn't happen.
Folks, we're just going to focus on the report, please. We're not going to talk about the AGM or we're just focused on the report. So.
Okay, so when will we discuss that, Jim? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's just I I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, because.
Discuss.
They have. They have emailed in asking council to ask the BIA to re-look at the eighty-five percent increase. They got no responses. They've asked council to look at the closures of the the creation of these gates and then the closures for events. Chris just councillor Dubrowski just said he really doesn't think the complaints are are focused on that. They're on other issues. They're messaging me saying, no, these are the issues. Can they bring a a delegation to council and speak to us? Can they ask to be on the agenda to say, A, what the levy increases is doing to their businesses and what they believe the closures will do?
Well, I would suggest everything get directed through the clerk. I think we've all heard from the 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 people that are opposed to it, and there's two schools of thought. There's one school that thinks this is not the time to spend money, and there's the other school thought that believes this is the right time to spend. So advertising doesn't stop. You have to decide when the right time is. And so the BIA, the elected BIAs, made some decisions.
They are an elected. Most of them are appointed.
Well, however it is, they're chosen by by their peers and they're there in a position. Because we can't micromanage all the different BIAs in the city, but I would suggest for now, let's focus on the the promenade proposal that we have before us. And if they want to have discussions with the on the agenda with our clerk, by all means. But right now, we're here to talk about this report. So I'm going to move on now to councillor Dubrowski and then councillor Strange, who are waiting to speak.
Thank you. Yeah, we're not talking about putting financial pressure on businesses here, talking about a list of events. We're. We're talking about the installation of gates for future street closures, once the province allows it. And to councillor Campbell's point. It might not be this summer, but we're here to support an elected BIA's proposal. To bring more people to the street, to enhance the street, to make the street grow, to make the street successful. Councillor Iainoni mentioned which businesses are are affected with the street closure. If you look on the report. And just look at the the map of Queen Street, it's ninety-five percent bars and restaurants from St. Lawrence to Chrysler. And in a summer, which we might be relying on patios, if I was a bar or restaurant owner, I would welcome this with with open arms. And councillor, sorry, Mr. Nichol alluded to the amount of parking available in and around Queen Street. When I go for my haircut on Queen Street, I park in the back back of the building. There's limited spots of parking on the actual street. So I I I don't think. That has a a big enough effect to not warrant closing two blocks to bring potentially thousands of people down to the street. And at the end of the day. Listen, the BIAs worked diligently to come up with a plan of attack that suits. All businesses in a consistent and I believe a fair manner. And although it would be. Pretty much impossible to please everybody on the street, this proposal, in my opinion, provides the highest and best use of the street and the current climate. And it really is setting up the street for success and versatility. So I I like to make a motion to support the the recommendation or the request from the BIA. And and to councillor Campbell's point, we we can't just sit still and static. We we need to move forward and we need to plan for the future. And the installation of these gates is planning for a successful future on Queen Street.
Okay, so we have a motion by councillor Dubrowski. We have a second by councillor Campbell.
Recorded vote, please.
Okay, recorded vote.
And to that point. If I could just add to that motion, I I was speaking to a business owner earlier. If we can include, and I'm not sure if it's part of a site plan process. But include the two business owners on Chrysler and Queen, which is Grand Central Niagara and I believe DJ.
Is he frozen for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, Chris, I don't know if you can hear us, but you froze. Can't hear anything. That you you're saying. You might want to log out, log back in. Okay, I don't know if, yeah, I'm going to go to you in one sec, councillor Strange. I just want to make sure he hears us. So councillor Dubrowski, I don't know if you can hear us or not, but we cannot hear you. Your screen is frozen. Maybe you can log out, log back in. And I don't know if we have another way to get that to him. I don't know if we can reach out to him somehow to let him know. Pardon me? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to councillor Strange.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, when I was speaking earlier, I I, you know, this is about the gates and I think last year. That was a big problem because they had these big barriers and and the street was closed permanently, basically, because they had to bring these big front loaders to pick them up and move them. And the same with Center Street. So if this is a a good compromise where you can actually open and close the gates within a couple of minutes, you know what I mean? And it's and it beautifies the 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 city, not these big, uglier barriers, right? So I would actually like to see that on Center Street probably in the next year or two instead of, you know, costing the city to remove these barriers all the time. So I think it's a it's a good compromise to have these gates where you can open and and if it doesn't go well, just keep them open and you just close them at certain. Certain times of the year when you need events, but I think it's something that needs to be put in there, whether it's closed. You know, for the whole summer or whether it's closed just for events. I think it's something that that's needed downtown.
Yeah, okay, that's I I agree with you. Councillor councillor Thompson?
Yes, I was really concerned about all the emails and the contacts with respect to this. Over the past few. Actually, a month or two. But I think this is a very positive move to put these. Fences up there that you don't have to have major work from the staff to do it and. Cost a lot of more money. This is an opportunity to utilize. Decisions for the downtown. And I think this is going to be a very positive move. And the council is responsible for the streets. And when we make a decision to close them, that's our decision. And we're not going to make decisions that negatively hurt the businesses. So I think this is a positive move forward. And the gates are there. If we don't use it, it's not going to be a problem. So I am in favor of the action.
Thank you for that, councillor Thompson. And then councillor Dubrowski, where'd you go? He was just there. Is he gone again?
Oh, I'm here. I'm just.
Okay, did you? I'm sure you got cut off right when you were starting to talk about, you said something about two bars or restaurants. And then that's when you cut out.
Yeah, sorry, I I thought everybody else froze. Apparently it was me. So I just wanted to add. There was. There's two businesses on Chrysler Avenue. Where the 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 gates are proposing to be installed. Wanted to include those two businesses in some sort of site plan process. Where when the BIA is working to choose which gates, the aesthetic look, where they're actually installed, just include those two businesses in that planning process. Because it will impact them with with gates either opening side to side or opening as arms or gates, but either way, wanted to include Grand Central Niagara. And DJ's in the motion to make sure that the BIA does do their due diligence with the two businesses and and get their input. Before they make a final decision, if we were to go ahead with it.
Okay, so is that part of your your motion then, councillor?
Yes, please, thank you.
Are you good with that for the second? Yes, okay, great. And and I will also weigh in since it's going to be recorded vote. So I too support this recommendation and I I'd looked at last summer. When I spoke to the business people on Center Street and some of them said they went from having the worst. Season they've ever had in their career, some of them facing losing their businesses. And when they were able to expand out onto the street because they couldn't gather inside the numbers they needed, some of them said they had the best season they ever had. And they were just so grateful, they're so happy. And they realized, and you know what I realized, wherever I travel to, I'm always drawn to the outdoor markets. If it's Ottawa, you wanna go to the Byward Market uh in Quebec City, you know, you wanna eat your French onion soup outside, not necessarily inside. And uh, I think it's pretty safe to say during the summer, people wanna be outside. I even heard this is what I love, locals saying to me, I never go down in the tourist district, but when you close down Center Street, I was drawn to the area. I love being outside. I love watching people. And that's one of the things that locals really wanna see. And I know our downtown has such potential to do great things. And to get the great things happening, you need people there. And how do you get people there? These are the types of things that are gonna draw people. Like we we'd have our Springalicious and you'd see big crowds gathering. Uh, our Santa Claus parade, our our Canada parade. We need more festival type things where people can go. They can bring their families, they can bring their friends, and they could hang out outside and just enjoy the city. So I I think this is great and and we're not doing anything permanent. We're gonna control the situation with gates. City's not gonna lose control. So I will support this. I'm proud to support this. I think it's a a move in the right direction. So I've got uh Counselor Campbell and then Counselor Iainoni.
I I think I'm speaking on behalf of uh Counselor Dubrowski. Uh, uh, we will work towards uh and make sure that the membership is communicated with by the BIA.
Terrific. That's terrific. That's great, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I just got a message and they just said, just so you know, just so council knows. The chair and the executive director already went downtown and asked the owner of Grand Central where he wants the gates. So they said, this is obviously, and and they ended with, so obviously this was already decided upon. So they've already done what we what Counselor Dubrowski suggesting. So they get it, to them, this was a done deal anyway. And and the people messaging me cannot believe that these that that decisions are being made. They're being told the decisions before we even vote on them.
Well, we haven't voted on anything, so I think it'd be premature till till we call the vote. So um, I've got Counselor Dubrowski.
I, yeah, through you, Mayor. Um, I'm glad to hear that uh the executive director and the chair went down to Grand Central to to chat with uh Mr. Joe Murk. I um, I I think uh communication is key. Counselor Campbell alluded to it. And I do know the board is making every effort to uh make sure that they have a newsletter database set up. Um, to make sure that all the merchants and all the vendors on the street are communicated um efficiently and accordingly. Um, and it's great news. I know they have an open door policy and I know business owners are are welcome to uh to go into the office to ask questions as well as email, but uh good news to hear that they were down there speaking with Joe. Uh, I'm not sure the the other comments about uh having something already being decided. Um, it's not something I heard, but either way, my motion stands on the floor.
Hey, thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, oh, sorry, Counselor Strange.
So I just wanna re- this is not to to close the streets. This is just to put the gates up and let them have a chance to close them periodically. We haven't made a a decision on closing these streets. If I had my way, I would have it at the top of Queen Street and at the very bottom of Queen Street. So even when we have our Santa Claus parade or parades down there, we could just close it without having police everywhere and everything. It would be so efficient. But this is in front of us. And I think it's a a great way, if you wanna, you know, do a Springalicious or a concert down there. You can close the street and boom, it's happening. This is not, nothing's been discussed about permanent closing all summer or whatever it may be. We saw, this is just to put the install the gates in.
Gotcha. Uh, Counselor Carrio.
Just a quick one, your worship. So if you vote no, you're voting to not support the downtown BIA financially also for the sixty five hundred, is that correct? That's all one motion?
Yep, that's right. It's all included.
Thank you.
Yep, five recommendations. Um, okay, Mr. Clerk, we're gonna call the vote, if you would, please.
So we have a motion on the floor for to approve the recommendations in the report and then to also include uh that there be communication with the two businesses on Chrysler Avenue, namely Grand Central and DJ's. Uh, to discuss with them and get them involved in the planning of the gate installation. Uh, this was moved by Counselor Dubrowski, seconded by Counselor Campbell. Uh, we'll start with Counselor Campbell.
In favor.
Counselor Dubrowski.
In favor.
Counselor Iainoni.
Opposed.
Counselor Carrio.
In favor.
Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yes.
Counselor Strange.
In favor.
Counselor Thompson.
Yes.
And Mayor Diodati.
Four.
And that motion carries with Counselor LaCoco declaring conflict.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Did somebody reach out to Counselor LaCoco and we'll bring her back into the meeting? Welcome back, Counselor LaCoco. Did you miss us? Don't answer that. Okay, moving on to item seven point five, Chippewa Boat Ramp Operational Review. I'll ask Mr. Nickel if you'd please walk us through. Uh, we've got four recommendations here for council to consider. And then I've got Counselor Thompson first. Go ahead, Mr. Nickel, and then Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll keep my comments on this report fairly brief. Um, in essence, the city has been monitoring some of the movements in other municipalities and that the Niagara Parks Commission uh with the monetization of public's accessible spaces and parking at boat ramps and beaches and and the like. Uh, our concern going into this spring was that the Parks Commission had decided to uh charge a fee for those who wanted to park at their boat ramps on the Upper River, as well as in Queenston and other locations. And our concern was that that could potentially drive up our uh very popular uh destination at the Chippewa Boat Ramp. Uh, before doing any uh, uh, before bringing forward any formal uh considerations, we went out to the public in a survey uh back in April and we received a overwhelming response and and a lot of uh interest from those in Chippewa and the boating community. Uh, so the results of that survey are included as attachments in our report. Over uh eight hundred uh individual responses were received and there was other feedback on on social media that um wasn't um specifically included, but staff had a look at as well. What became clear after reviewing uh the survey results is that uh there is still a very strong desire to keep our boat launch as a free amenity uh for the public. And and so staff took that back and looked at some of the repercussions about a few options of potentially charging for parking uh or keeping it free. One of the big detractors about charging for parking at that location is that all of the surrounding streets are uh are unrestricted streets for parking. So our concern about charging for parking was that we'd move those vehicles into the neighborhood, which is something we really didn't want to um to encourage. Furthermore, uh, the the current location as a as a free parking location and free on-street parking, unrestricted on-street parking on Lyons Creek Road allowed for some overflow. But by making it a parked, a a paid parking site, we wouldn't allow uh vehicles to park on-street on Lyons Creek because that would become a safety issue. So in effect, by having a free parking at the location, we can fit more people into um the Chippewa Boat Ramp. So it's our recommendation at this point in time to to ramp up some enforcement, to make sure that people are staying within their lines and their lanes and that boats are parking in the designated boating spots. We wanna make sure that for the upcoming season that our boaters and our public using that facility are safe and orderly. And uh so by doing some additional enforcement that way and and education more so uh we can help to fit more more vehicles parked safely there and keep operations running smoothly. We know that it's going to be a busy summer and uh we know that that means we'll also need to do some periodic reviews and perhaps have some of our ambassadors out there helping and assisting people. Few of the other concerns we were uh we were aware of is the impact of swimmers and floaters uh to the boaters. And so for the uh interests of overwhelming interest of public safety, we we'd like to recommend that we restrict again, swimming at uh the boat launch. Finally, knowing that this popularity is only growing and that Chippewa has expansion potential with some of the subdivisions coming online. We feel it's an appropriate time to pitch to council the idea of moving forward with a master plan that looks at enhancing some waterfront recreation. Uh, and and will allow us to implement future initiatives and future docks in a way that's consistent with a a conceptual approach that takes into consideration all of the public's feedback and some of the concerns relating to direct landowners, OPG, Niagara Parks Commission, and other stakeholders. Mr. Mayor, those are my comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nickel. So I've got Counselor Thompson, Peter Angelo, Carrio, and Campbell. So Counselor Thompson.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity here. Um, and I would uh move a motion to accept the report from Mr. Nickel. But I also know that this is a uh a long-term situation to deal with Chippewa Creek, the swimmers, the boaters, the parking, and all this issue. I was on the dock committee for many, many years. And uh, I have a real appreciation of what we have down there. And it's just gonna get busier and busier uh as we go through the time. And uh, what I would like to suggest, because there's gotta be some uh solid recommendations in the future. And I appreciate what Mr. Nickel is doing and what what he has done. But I would like to have um a committee set up to work with Mr. Nickel. And uh, I would be happy to serve on there with some other counselor. And I would uh like to also recommend that uh Jay Mason, who was involved in this for the last twenty some odd years. And he was um sending in emails about this report to have him on that committee. And I think we have to make a lot of this decision in the future about new areas opening up. And uh, we have some, I've talked with Jay so many times in the last a couple of months, that we have some great ideas. And we would like to uh meet with Mr. Nickel and make sure we take uh the best advantage of how we move forward with all of the aspects of uh the Chippewa Creek, the swimmers, the boaters. Um, all the aspect that, and anyway, I would like to include that as part of the motion for the uh Mr. Eric Nichols' report.
Okay, thank you for that. I've got Counselor Peter Angelo. Um, are you seconding the the motion, Counselor Peter Angelo?
I was gonna second the recommendation, yes, your worship, the four-part recommendation.
Are you good with the uh amendment?
I I I don't mind a committee to be created, your worship. I guess they would ask people from Chippewa, uh whoever would like to let uh sit on it. I have no problems with that.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, did any other comments or you just wanted to second it?
I do have another comment, your worship. I just wanna be ver- uh very short about it because there there's half to half the people that really support the boat ramps. There's half the people that support, you know, swimmers and recreational opportunities. But I think a hundred percent of the people support safety first. And I uh of all the people that I've talked to, they just don't wanna see the two mixed.
Yeah.
So it's great to see that, you know, we're gonna look at more opportunities for a boat ramp. It's great to see that we're gonna actually start to develop a Chippewa waterfront recreational opportunity, your worship. Because I I I I think being able to access the the creek from a recreational standpoint, whether you're swimming or using a kayaking uh or an inner tube or whatever you have, is important. We just can't allow the two to mix. So I'm happy to second the motion.
Yep, well said. And that's exactly how how I've been hearing it too. So uh, next up, Counselor uh Carrio and then Campbell.
Thank you, your worship. But Counselor Peter Angelo mentioned a couple of things I was already gonna say about swimming and the um, the boating don't mix. But I don't think that we lose sight of the fact that that the creek is a great place for the young people to swim or for anybody to swim. And we're not gonna stop the kids from going in that water. So it would be good to make sure that we keep in mind that we should have a place for them. Uh, so that that they are included and somewhere where it's safe for them to go in and out of the water. And I just think that we shouldn't lose sight of that either. So I see number four covers that. When we get involved with the with the plan, I'm sure that we'll take into consideration uh swimming. Thank you.
Well, that's a great point.
Want the committee, yeah.
That's a great point, Counselor Carrio, because especially look at last summer, the kids weren't working. It was super hot. And it was busier than it's ever been down there. So they're doing all the outdoor water recreational things, you know?
Yeah, and they've already lost, your worship, they've already lost, if you can recall, um both Counselor Thompson and and Campbell, remember? I don't know, the rest might be too young, but the uh, um uh, there was great swimming at Kingsbridge Park.
Yes, yeah.
That got eliminated and and that was where everybody went to swim. So it was, it left a huge void. And then Duffin Islands, another place, a huge void. So I think that uh, you know, we we have to just keep that in mind when we make our plan. Thank you.
Yeah, my grandfather used to tell me about those places. Uh, moving on to uh Camp, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, years ago, I was uh hired by Saint John's Ambulance Boat Patrol. And uh, they have really moved forward over the years with better quality machines. I mean, we had a fifteen horsepower outboard uh motorboat that uh we scared like crazy going out into the river. But I would ask that that they be included in this committee meeting. Um, because I, they play a significant role in terms of uh safety on the creek itself.
Okay, so we'll go to the mover. Uh, you're good with that, uh, Counselor Thompson?
Um, I just got an email from Mike Strange. He would love to be on the committee too. So anybody else who would like to be on, uh, to speak up now.
So you're good to include the Saint John Water Patrol? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, it's there, yeah.
Okay, good, good. Uh, and you're good with it, the seconder too, Counselor Peter Angelo? Yep, okay, good. That's great. Uh, well, if there's no further comments on this, let's call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, uh, Eric. Appreciate all your hard work on this. I know it was not an easy one. We keep sending you in there with all these tricky ones, so thank you. Okay, moving on uh to item seven point six, former Parks Recreation Culture uh Proposed End Use uh report. And oh, look at that, Counselor Nickel or uh Counselor, I just demoted you. Uh, Director Nickel, uh, it's your report. Uh, so did you wanna walk us through this one as well?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to. Um, so this report is a follow-up to a twenty nineteen staff report. Uh, where council uh voted at that time to proceed with the process to de-designate the heritage designation from the former Parks and Rec Building at the corner of Lundys Lane, um, at the Lundys Lane Cemetery. So the the process followed that staff would apply to the Conservation Review Board uh for their comments. And we've done so. Uh, and the proceedings with the Conservation Review Board were held earlier this year. Uh, they were slightly delayed because of uh of COVID impacts. The Conservation Review Board's purpose is to weigh in on heritage elements of the facility. And they've done that through their hearing. And there were two uh individuals um representing the public who had the interest in maintaining heritage designation of the building. Uh, so the city um um worked with our legal team, uh external legal, to uh put a case forward. Unfortunately, our case wasn't heard at that review board because the review hearing is about the heritage elements. Our argument has always been and council has always supported the fact that the business plan for that facility and the cost to upkeep, maintain and renovate that building to something useful is um, it is significantly uh outweighing its uh end-use potential as uh something to be reused as such uh as an indoor columbarium. So um, the recommendations from the Conservation Review Board was that it still retained its heritage features. And that council um considered that in their decision to potentially de-designate and move forward with this alternate approach. So staff's recommendation is still consistent with our twenty nineteen recommendation that council approved. And our recommendation is to proceed with the de-designation and then proceed with demolition in the later this year. And uh the grading to prepare that site for an additional two hundred and seventy-five in-ground burial lots and eventually four hundred niche columbarium. Um, the plan is laid out in their report. The plan is laid out in their report, and some of the graphics are included there of our conceptual landscaping plan. We've circulated that to the Lundys Lane BIA and a number of other stakeholders, and we've all supported bringing that as a gateway landscape feature to the Lundys Lane corridor. So, Mr. Mayor, our recommendation is to proceed with de-designation, demolition, and move forward on revitalization of that corner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nichol. I've got Counselor Thompson, then Campbell. And then LaCoco.
I would love to make the motion to accept the recommendations with respect to the development there. We have been looking at that mess there on Lundys Lane. And the BIA has sent in correspondence indicating that they fully support the removal of the building and the development. And it only makes sense, because it's over $2 million to do any kind of renovations there, which would be the city's responsibility. And by taking the other route with the cemetery and utilizing it all, I think that that is a very positive financial move for the city, too. So I would be happy to move the report.
I'll second that.
Okay, so motion by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Inoni. So now I've got, in this order, Counselor Campbell, LaCoco, Strange, Inoni, Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Your Worship. After a long discussion with people from the Heritage Committee, City of Niagara Falls, yesterday and today, I reread the report and I reread the Heritage Ontario report. And there seems to be a lot of, I believe, misconception with respect to why we should get rid of this and why we shouldn't. I'm going to vote against this motion. I believe that we should invest in history and culture, and I think that we could make a fantastic columbarium there. And I think that in the long run, if you do the finances, I think that the sale of niches in the columbarium will far outweigh any costs associated with redeveloping it.
Thank you for that, Counselor. I've got Counselor LaCoco, then Strange, Inoni, Peter Angelo.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I voted to demolish the Parks and Rec building before, but I have a greater appreciation and education since I was appointed to the Heritage Committee. I've learned a lot about what heritage attributes it are and why they're important to communities and why we really need to fight to keep buildings in our community. I believe that we let the building go into disrepair. I believe that we can achieve the results that are in this business plan without demolishing it. We can clean up the corner. We can still make a gateway. We can do an indoor columbarium. And we can support the area businesses. I do understand that the businesses are very concerned because it has looked a mess for so long, but it doesn't have to remain that way. I think we can also satisfy some of our burial needs. The next item on our agenda is 7.7 Mountain Row of Landfill and Mews. And it talks about a cemetery in there. I know we are getting close to amounts of burial plots that we have in each of our cemeteries. But 7.7 does talk about additional cemetery use for there, so I think we can look into that as well. The Conservation Review Board recommends that the city maintain the designation. That's what they're there for, and that's what they're recommending. The city has followed the Conservation Review Board's suggestion in other cases within the city. Cultural heritage is still in that property, and I think it's important that we keep that. The city has not proven that there is a loss of cultural heritage value or interest. The issues of repairs, maintenance should not be the determination whether it's torn down or not. Niagara Falls only has a few designated properties left, and I think it's important that we keep them. The hazardous materials would have to be dealt with whether we demolish it or whether we renovate it. There are tons of architectural notes of that building. And I'm not gonna go into them, but there is a huge list of all of the features within that building. The building itself is still in good condition. And the province has mandated municipalities to do a municipal assessment management plan by 2025. And one of the reasons why the province is encouraging and mandating municipalities to do that, it's not just about the roads and the pipes for the water and sewers. It's about assessing all of our buildings and finding out what the values are and to ensure that we know about them, that we're not forgetting about them, that they are top of mind. So that's really important. Everybody in the province is doing that. And many people say, why save a building? It's only 100 years old. But if you think about a lot of communities around the rest of the world, they have 500-year-old buildings. You can save a 500-year-old building, but you can't save it unless it's a 100-year-old building first. So I really don't want to get rid of this building. I think we can incorporate it, support the businesses that are there. I think we can have a stream of income coming in, and we're investing in our heritage and our culture for next fall. So I am opposing the recommendation.
Thank you, Count. Thank you, Counselor. I've got Counselor Strange, Inoni, Peter Angelo.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, and this building is old, and unfortunately, it wasn't well-kept up. I remember meeting Serge Fellasetti back in the early 90s when he worked there, and there was water leaking through there, and it was brutal. I don't know if you remember that, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, at these designations, if they're not well taken care of, there's no use keeping them. You know, if it's gonna cost you $2 million, like I think Wayne Thompson said, and maybe Mark Richardson could even attest to this, to try to repair, and what you're gonna do, and where is this money coming from? It's coming from residents, taxpayers. That's where the money's gonna come from. So I agree that it's sad that it wasn't kept up to where it was. We had to get rid of the old city hall as well. But if there's mold and unsafe stuff inside there, there's no use keeping it around. We're not there, you know, for the safety of people going in there or walking through there. We're still gonna keep, and Mark can talk to this, part of that building, and structurally, and have that. It's gonna be well-designed and very nice. And, you know, I do accept that it's very, very tough for people to realize at the end-use of some of these designated places. They have the nice brick and everything. But if you go inside of these places, and I don't know if Mark or Serge can talk to us about actually what it would actually cost and what the condition of the inside of this building was when they were there last.
You know what I'll do? Once council, everyone's had the chance to ask their questions and make their comments, I'm gonna ask Mark at the end if he can maybe kinda address all those questions. So he's making notes, I see. That's great. So, okay, Counselor Strange, are you done, Counselor Strange?
Yes, I am. I'd just like to like the price tag and where that money would actually come from if we had to fix. Where's that $2 million gonna come from?
Okay, I got Counselor Inoni, Peter Angelo.
Recorded events, boat?
Yep, okay, no problem. I've got Counselor Inoni, Peter Angelo, and Carrio. So Counselor Inoni.
Now, for anybody who's a parent, you know the song "That Never Ends"? This is like the piece of property that never ends, this council. We have voted on this issue probably, if I remember, six or seven times from demolishing it to Mr. Pinku to going the gamut. We voted on this. We're just, in our council report, it says councils to reaffirm their decision. But listening to council, and I still believe in Counselor Thompson's motion, but I was trying to read through while people were talking. Maybe through you to Mr. Richardson. Mr. Richardson, it says proposed cemetery development and heritage elements incorporation. So when they tore down the St. Catherine's Hospital, all they kept was that arch. Do you know what I'm talking about? The arch stone way. Is there not some way that we can keep historical portions or heritage proportions of that stone to create a columbarium? I'm trying to reread to make sure that it doesn't say that in the motion. We can do that.
Yep. So Counselor, that's a great question.
So maybe through you to Mr. Richardson, can we save some heritage components? And, I mean, I remember when we closed it, candidate day, the candidate committee was meeting there. You couldn't breathe. It was so damp. It was musty. I couldn't believe we still had staff in there. It was in horrific condition when we closed it. So is there anything of the outside we can retain?
So Counselor, what are you gonna do if it's okay? That's a great question, and I'm gonna, so Mr. Richardson's making notes, so he can address everything all at one time. So we're gonna come to that question. So I appreciate that. I'm gonna go to Counselor Peter Angelo, then Carrio.
All right, thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, we've been down this road before, Your Worship, and, I mean, I've given my comments over and over. I've always found value in historical and heritage landmarks. I remember when, you know, council made the decision to sell off part of the Lundys Lane battlefield that we acquired. I was opposed to that as well. I've consistently voted against, you know, removing the designation on this. I think what's hard about this one is that council itself is the one that designated this building. And now we're gonna remove that designation and tear the building down. So from an optics standpoint, it's hard for us to, I guess, look at another landowner and say to them that you have to find value in, you know, retaining your historical building. If we're gonna treat our own buildings like that. That's the only hard part for me. And I think if we're gonna use the financial aspect, we're always gonna lose. Because it obviously costs more money if you have a historical building and you wanna restore it as opposed to tearing it down and just building something brand-new. So that argument is never gonna be on the side of retaining the building. Your Worship, I don't really wanna go on more because I think we all know our opinions on this one, so I'll just vote against the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Carrio.
Sorry, Your Worship, took me a minute to find the button. I like old buildings, too, Your Worship, and I like old people. Most of my friends are old, and I like them. I don't wanna get rid of them. But I wish I could take the position that the money doesn't matter. I mean, after a certain point is what happens. We let it go too long. I mean, it's not just a little bit more money to save the old building now. Now it becomes a huge project and a huge financial burden. And we're voting for other people's money to be spent. I can't in good conscience do that with other people's money. So that's the reason I have to vote to move ahead with this project, Your Worship. It's just, we should have been looking after it 20, 30 years ago. It's kinda just too late, and it would cost too much to save it. I'd love to see some of the features saved. And I'd just like to make sure we get a comment. One of the counselors made a comment that the building was in good condition. So I'd just make sure we address that when the staff speaks. Thank you.
That's great. So if there's no other counselors to speak, then I'm gonna go to Mr. Richardson. And so you've heard all the questions and the comments, so maybe you could help us address some of them. So welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, Your Worship and members of council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to some of your questions. And I'll try to tackle each one individually. The first I'll speak to is the reuse of the building as an indoor columbarium. And we have investigated that option repeatedly. And what I can speak to is not only the cost to develop an indoor columbarium in that building, but the experience that we are currently going through with an existing historic building that was converted into an indoor columbarium. And that being St. John's Old Anglican, or old St. John's Anglican Church, which is now the Stamford Green Heritage Columbarium. The issue that we've run into is that there's a limited sales life to selling niches within an indoor columbarium. And we're reaching that sales life with the old St. John's Heritage or the Stamford Green Heritage Columbarium. So what happens is, and I was just tallying this up before I joined, was over, since 2003, specifically speaking to Stamford Green Heritage Columbarium, to maintain and restore the building to its, or keep it in its original state, between the Heritage Board and the city, we've spent nearly $155,000 just since 2003 keeping the building in its original state. And on average, we've spent upwards of about $10,500 for just annual maintenance, insurance, janitorial utilities, those types of things. Problem is that those costs are cyclical. They're annual. They will always be a factor. But there will come a time where we can no longer sell niches within that building to generate the revenue necessary to maintain it and to upkeep it. And we run into the same issue. And keep in mind, the Stamford Green Heritage Columbarium is one-third the size of the old rec building. And then just to speak to the process, this is going back to 2013. When the building was, when we first had consultants come through and they conducted a lengthy investigation. They dealt with the public consultation. And in 2003, it was determined that the building was not in a healthy working environment, which is why the city vacated in 2004. And at that time, we've heard the stories of the sewer gases and the landscape architects working in the basement and the sewer gases that would permeate the floors and that it really wasn't a very enjoyable, enjoyable working environment. So to redevelop the old rec building into an indoor columbarium would cost in between $970,000. And these are numbers that were generated in the 2019 report. And $1.296 million, that would be just to get the building up to code or up to snuff. Whereas by demolishing the building and developing in-ground lots and an outdoor columbarium, it provides us the flexibility to sell a greater number of lots, which would then be used to help maintain the cemeteries in perpetuity, which is the responsibility of the city. But it would also allow us the flexibility to install more columbarium as needed. Now, I'd like to touch upon the questions or the comments about maintaining aspects of the heritage features in the building. And that is something that we've gone to great lengths in design. And in the latest report, you'll see an updated design with respect to the outdoor columbarium. It's a 400-nich columbarium. And what may not be clear in that is that the proposal is to use the red brick from the rec building in the design and development of that columbarium. We'd also use some of the field stone that is used along the base of the old rec building. Furthermore, the coined corners were one of the features that were identified as having historical significance. So we modified the proposal in developing that columbarium to include coined corners on the end units of the columbarium. And finally, in trying to share the history, not only of that building, but keep in mind that site was originally the location of the Red Meeting House, which was built back in 1817. And then there was actually another schoolhouse prior to this, prior to the old rec building. So the goal was to represent the entire, the history of the entire corner, also to represent the families who made the development of the original Methodist cemetery, the Green family, the Lundys families, recognizing Charles Green, who was one of the King's Rangers and who is interred just outside of the cemetery gates. Recognizing the overall history, the significance of the area on that columbarium. And you'll see that there are some laser-etched designs of incorporating images of each of the buildings and providing a written history about that. But we also wanted to incorporate signage. I believe it was at the last council meeting that we spoke about this, that Counselor Strange asked if we could recognize people who went to that school. And we would happily do that through investigating school lists or such. So I think I've addressed the primary concerns or comments, but I welcome any other. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks very much, Mr. Richardson. Is there any specific questions of Counselor, Mr. Richardson? Counselor Dobrowski.
Thanks for your, through you. Mark, you mentioned, was it 2003 when the building was deemed, you said, an unsafe and unhealthy working environment? I just wanna clarify that.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. In 2003, BMI Consulting was hired to conduct an assessment of the building and determine what the ideal end-use was. And it was at that time that the staff was sharing their comments or concerns about the sewer gases and such coming through the floors. And that was part of the consideration when it was determined that the best case, or the best end-use for that location, that corner, was to demolish the building and extend the location, that corner, was to demolish the building and, and extend the cemetery.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of council? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to our clerk. Uh, there's a request for recorded vote, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, yes, your worship. Uh, so the motion would be to approve the recommendations within the report. Councillor Campbell.
Opposed.
Councillor Dubrowski.
War.
Councillor Iannoni. Councillor Iannoni.
In favor.
Thank you. Councillor Cario.
In favor.
Councillor La Coco. Councillor Peter Angelo.
Against.
Councillor Strange.
In favor.
Councillor Thompson.
Yes.
And Mayor Diodati.
I'm in favor.
And that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, and, and I didn't speak to it. I spoke to it last time. It came before council, but I used to work in that building in the nineties uh, when I ran the Ontario Winter Games. And, uh, and I could tell you a lot of stories there, but they weren't pleasant. And that was, uh, twenty-five, thirty years ago. So, uh, unfortunately, I think the, 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 the bad news is we've lost some buildings. The good news is we've learned from it. And now our staff have put together an inventory and a maintenance schedule for all of the city buildings now so that this isn't gonna happen in the future. That's the good news. So we're gonna preserve the, the buildings before they go beyond that point of bottomless pit. And, um, it's important to maintain our heritage and, uh, the, the, the buildings that have that kind of history and character. And unfortunately, this is one that, uh, well, it's unfor, it's, it's, it's window of opportunity, I think, passes a long time ago. Um, so we're gonna move along now, uh, to item seven point seven. This is the Mountain Road Landfill End Use Master Plan. I'm gonna go, Mr. Nickel, you're a busy guy tonight. So, uh, we're gonna come back to you and maybe you could lead us through this report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will be happy to do that. So, uh, as a follow-up to a motion from two meetings ago, uh, in the new business from councillor Peter Angelo, I'm happy to provide some information and some background on the status of the Mountain Road Landfill and some opportunities we have to, uh, to start to look at reimagining that site and some of the adjacent properties. Um, through this report, I've been able to pull up a little bit of history. Uh, the city of Niagara Falls used to own the Mountain Road Landfill. And it was, uh, transferred to the region as part of the regional amalgamation of waste management back in nineteen ninety-six. Uh, since that time, the region's been managing it and it's been, uh, considered as nearly closed when they took it over. The region is, uh, is actively working on a final end use plan that will allow approximately two hundred thousand cubic meters of, of clean soil to be used as cap and as fill to, to reach the final contours. That in itself presents an opportunity for the city to partner with the region to make sure that those contours are built in such a way that will allow that site to provide a benefit to the end user, the city, the residents, the region, uh, for many, many more years to come. That type of plan must be done in consultation with the Ministry of Environment, Conservation Parks. Um, and it would be beneficial that, uh, the city sit at the table to look at, uh, a master plan approach that may incorporate some linkages to the city-owned land to the west uh, on the property at twenty-four thirty New Bern Road, as well as to some of the, uh, um, lands at the east at Fireman's Park. This exercise was done by the city in, in the late nineties and it has been, uh, has gone through several iterations in the past. So what I'm asking, uh, council to do is to support moving forward, uh, in our twenty twenty-two budget process with a master plan, to partner with the region, some cost sharing, to bring some consultation forward and bring some experts in to, to help us vision what the site could look like and to incorporate the lands both at Fireman's Park and at twenty-four thirty New Bern Road to the west as part of that visioning exercise. Because we know that there's some long overdue community, uh, needs that could be included there such as cemeteries or, um, baseball diamonds, rugby fields and the like. And, uh, if we can provide some, uh, conduits for the community to provide input, some cost estimates, we can work these into our long-term future master plans and hopefully move that landfill into it in asset rather than a liability. Thank you.
Thank you ver, thank you very much, Mr. Nickel. Um, looking for some direction from council. Councillor Strange, you have your hand up there? Is that, uh, oh, and councillor Cario, look at you guys, very digitally tuned in. Okay, councillor Strange and councillor Cario.
I, I think councillor Cario had his hand up first, so you were at, you were ahead of the gun, the gun there. Go ahead.
No, no, cuz on my screen, the first one goes, that's okay. Councillor Cario, go ahead, councillor Cario.
He's just letting me go first cuz I'm older. Um, the, uh, the question I had was for Mr. Nickel. Uh, I was, uh, interested in when I was reading about the opportunity for fill. I, I can't remember exactly what you said about how much fill, but it looks to me like that that, uh, translate into about five thousand truckloads. Um, and I was just wondering whether there was an opportunity for the city to take advantage of. Uh, we have no place, when we call contracts, I know that it's a problem for some of our contractors and, uh, people doing work to, uh, get rid of good, clean fill. I'm just wondering whether or not there was an opportunity for the city to capitalize on that opportunity. If we could use that spot and whether we had a, a small charge per truckload or, uh, we could incorporate it into a contract that we provided a place to dump the fill out of an excavation or something like that over time where we might be able to, uh, make ourselves a half a million or a million dollars in allowing, uh, fill to be put there, good, clean fill. That, that's what I was thinking. So I just thought I'd mention that, Derek.
Mr. Nickel.
Yeah, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, that's definitely an option councillor. The, the ex, the, uh, disposal of surplus excavated soil is a major provincial issue right now. Uh, because road salts and other, um, naturally occurring elements are actually considered to be contaminants and it's very costly to remove that soil. The challenge we have at the moment is that is, it is a regional site. Just like Elm Street in Port Colborne became a regional site and was accepting municipal fill. The regions approach presently, although we can discuss this with them further, is that the Mountain Road Landfill be acceptable to all regional projects, not just city projects. Hundred thousand cubic meters, uh, does translate to a lot of additional material, can, can fill up quickly. My preference when we're talking about where that soil is coming from is that it stays locally in the region. Um, there's a lot of GTA projects that are bringing fill down this, this direction. And I think the region would be um, wise to use this as an asset to help municipalities, including the city, dispose of that surplus material that's still clean, but maybe non-ha, and it's considered non-hazardous. So it, it, there's some very specific criteria with what, with what can go there. And, uh, that's the discussion that we can take back to the region. If council wishes to, uh, to make a motion that we, we negotiate with the region for some sole, um, rights to it, then we can do that. Um, I'd be happy to take it back, but that will, that will be a discussion that we'll have to have with the regional representatives to make those, um, at arrangement.
Councillor Cario? You good with it? Okay, great. Okay, uh, councillor Strange.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think it's, it's a great idea. Um, it's, if you ever, ever go and walk out there, um, along the Bruce Trail, uh, Fireman's Park and, and you go towards, uh, the upper part of that mound where the former dump was, you could actually see, uh, the CN Tower and the, and the Toronto skyline. It's, it's awesome. We actually had a, a guy reach out to myself and councillor Peter Angelo to take a walk through there. So we walked, walked him through there and he couldn't believe how awesome it was. It was so, so nice. So if we can have that connection going through Fireman's Park towards across Moonburn Bridge into the, uh, the other end of the Bruce Trail, it would be awesome for, for trails, for recreational walkers. People wanna walk their dogs, um, just to go up there and, and, you know, in the sunset and, and see the Toronto skyline. And, uh, for, for track athletes, for cross-country athletes in the future to, uh, to use those different trails. It, it, it really is amazing. Um, I encourage anyone to go out there and just, uh, just walk by yourself or take your pet out there. It, it, it truly is a, a nice, a nice place. And, um, I will recommend, or I'll move the recommendation. Um, yep.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, move, move, uh, so you're moving the recommendation. Councillor Thompson, were you seconding it?
Um, I'll second it and, uh, just make a comment. Um, up near the, where the landfill is built, uh, huge above the level ground. Um, I always had an idea of creating a ski hill there. And, uh, I tell you something unique and different in this area and would really give people, and if you put it down right by New Bern Road and, uh, you could put it right down. Uh, I keep saying this to everybody, but, uh, I hope they look at that sometime. Thank you.
As long as councillor Thompson gets to go down first.
Yeah, you know, it's funny you say that. I, I, I told, well, first of all, I'm gonna say, cuz I've hiked many times through there. And you're right, the view on the top of that, once you get past the smell of the methane, uh, the view is spectacular and the tall grasses, Toronto, the sunsets, the best sunsets in the city. Looking off the edge of the escarpment, spectacular. You're right. It's one of the best kept secrets. And the same thing, like, uh, like, uh, in, in London, Ontario, they got, they call the Byron Bump. It's, it's a hill to go tubing, uh, you know, it's beginners. It's not gonna be like professional, but it's a fun place to go tobogganing. And, uh, it's great, just a recreational opportunity place. I mean, I agree. I think it's, it's a great idea. Yes, cross-country skiing, there's, anyway, snowboarding, there's so many things you could do there. Um, okay, so, uh, we've got a motion by, uh, councillor Strange, seconded by councillor Thompson. Um, so if there's no further comments, we'll call the vote. All those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Thanks, Mr. Nickel. I think, uh, you get to have a sip of your coffee now. Okay, moving on to, uh, so we're on to item seven point eight, um, licensing bylaw for vacation rental units and bed and breakfast. Uh, we're gonna call on Mr. Hurlovich. Um, I'm just gonna take, uh, I'm gonna take a little quick break here. I'm gonna pass the, the chair to councillor Peter Angelo if he'd just run it till I, till I get back.
Thanks, your worship. I guess I'll pass it over to Mr. Hurlovich, who's gonna introduce the, the new licensing bylaw for VRUs and B and Bs.
Nice. Thank you, uh, Mr. Acting Mayor. I don't have a formal presentation tonight. This is basically an, an update for, for council. Inasmuch as, uh, city council did, uh, adopt a report in twenty eighteen to zone the city for vacation rental units. They would be allowed in the same zones as hotels and motels. And those are the tourist commercial zones, the general commercial zones and the downtown area, the central business district zone. So those are the three areas that council, uh, approved vacation rental units. These are basically dwelling units where the owner is not present and they're rented to, uh, tourists for, uh, periods of less than, uh, twenty-eight days. Uh, at the same time, council, uh, changed the bed and breakfast zoning bylaw so that, uh, bed and breakfasts are now allowed in any R one, R two and R three zone uh, up to three, uh, rooms to for tourists. The owner does have to live in the house where the bed and breakfast is operating. And that has to be licensed by the city. So right now we have a, uh, a tourist home license and it's, uh, antiquated. The last update was uh, in two thousand and one. That's nineteen years ago. So with the new bylaws that were brought up, uh, brought into place in twenty eighteen, um, we are updating our licensing. The vacation, so the bed and breakfast zoning is in place now. The, uh, vacation rental, uh, unit bylaw was appealed. Uh, that went to an LPAT hearing that was last November. We're still waiting for the decision from LPAT. Uh, the solicitor has called this week or last week already um, to find out what has delayed the decision of the board member. Uh, so we are hoping that that zoning will be arriving soon. And, uh, as soon as that zoning does, we're anticipating that there would be a, a rash of people applying to convert their dwellings into vacation rental units. If you're wondering where those would be, uh, some of those houses would be the houses on Bridge Street opposite the V A station, everywhere, everything from, um, Erie Avenue all the way down to about Second Avenue. Those are all zone general commercial. They're all houses. Uh, they're all ready and waiting to be renovated and could be vacation rental units. Um, the office space is vacant above stores on Queen Street could be vacation rentals. And then there are various houses, uh, throughout the tourist areas. It could also be vacation houses. In addition to that, we have thirteen properties that council has site specifically zoned over the years for vacation rental. Those are throughout the city. And those units would now be, um, under this bylaw. So we're basically bringing the bylaw forward now in anticipation of a run on units in, in the commercial zones. And it as well positions the city for charges for people who are, um, currently, um, excuse me, operating vacation rentals, uh, but do not have the correct zoning and do not have a license. So we worked very closely with the regional prosecutor. He feels this bylaw is solid and that he will be able to, uh, use it to get prosecutions for people who are operating without a license. And that is one of the areas we have been, uh, has been very difficult to actually lay a, lay a charge or actually get a conviction. So, uh, those are, um, the areas. And so the bylaw, the licensing bylaw would be to update those for bed and breakfast and to bring in a brand new bylaw for vacation rental units. And, um, I don't know whether there are any questions.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Hurlovich. Let me see. Uh, I have councillor La Coco first.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I, I did have, uh, one question and then some comments through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Hurlovich. Could you tell me if someone who had multiple apartment units or say a duplex and the owner lived in one of them, is that considered owner occupied? A unit, not a house?
So are you talking about if they rec, if they have a, if they have a house and they have an upstairs apartment, can they rent the upstairs apartment as a vacation rental unit? Is that your question?
Correct. Is that considered owner occupied because the, the person's in the same property?
Well, no. So the owner occupied would have to be a bed and breakfast. And the bedrooms that are rented to the tourists would have to be in their same unit. So an upstairs apartment is not the same unit as a downstairs apartment.
Okay, that makes sense.
Short answer is no, they can't rent those to tourists, but they can rent two extra bedrooms in their own house or in their own apartment to a tourist.
Okay. Should I wait for my comments for other questions, Mr. Mayor, Acting Mayor?
I don't know that there are other questions, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I, I know that there's been a lot of concerns about the vacation rental units in our city and that's why we've been looking towards putting some sort of plan. I do believe that vacation rental units, Airbnbs, um, bed, bed and breakfasts are things that our city can support. We are in a tourist industry and people are looking for many different ways to come here and stay here. So I think it's really important that we have regulations and, um, requirements and guidelines for these so we don't run into the problems that we have been. And we wanna protect, protect our, our residents who are living in the residential areas specifically. I think the licensing bylaw pretty much has done that. Um, there, there's a lot of regulations and guidelines in there. And when you look at each individual one, a lot of it's about safety, fire, and it's really important that, that those are, um, adhered to. I like that the Airbnb Association has been approached for their thoughts. They were approached a year ago and they talked with, um, our staff to find out what would work, what they were willing to do. Um, so I, I really appreciate that we've done that. What I would like is some assurance that all of these requirements, um, are required by other interest industries, for example, motels, hotels. I, I don't want the VRU and the Airbnb Association and industries to be targeted to jump through a lot of hoops that other industries are not. So for for example, I did speak with Mr. Hurlovich. Um, he, we, we went through a lot of my questions and we found out that hotels are not licensed. So if we look at these VRUs, that they will be licensed, but our hotel industry is not licensed. Um, another example is in this licensing bylaw, it's a five hundred dollar licensing fee with a two hundred and fifty dollar renewal fee when hotels are only, their, their license is only sixty-five dollars. So I, I did find that the licensing fee a little bit affair. It was a high jump in comparison to others. Um, I know we have to start Um, I know we have to start somewhere, um, but I do want to ensure that other industries are going through the same guidance, uh, guidelines and requirements that the VRUs would be. But I do think this is a good place to start. And um, it's really important that we keep our residents safe in in their residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor. I'm gonna pass the meeting back over to the mayor who's back with us now. Uh, so Mr. Mayor, we're on the same uh, topic, which is the vacation rental units and bed and breakfast. And there is no motion on the floor, and I'll pass it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor uh, Peter Angelo. We've got Counselor Strange.
Yes, you're Mr. Mayor. Just a question to Alex on the tourist, so home sharing. So can you have owner occupied in an R one, R two, R three? But not serve breakfast?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the uh, way the licensing is set up, it says may include breakfast, so they do not need to serve breakfast. So they don't eat breakfast, because this is one of the areas the prosecutor outlined to us is that some of these businesses, they, you know, they're basically look like a bed and breakfast. Um, but when the prosecutor went to lay a charge or enforcement staff went to lay a charge and they went to court with the prosecutor, the owner would say, well, I don't serve breakfast. So I'm not a bed and breakfast. And so therefore, um, you charged me with the wrong offense. And so the licensing is set up to say that they may or may not serve breakfast, so they do not have to serve a meal.
So so basically like they're, they are an Airbnb, but they have to be owner occupied?
Well, yeah, so they, yeah. Airbnb is just a platform. It could be Verbo, it could be Flipkey, it could be any of those platforms.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, and it's as easy as logging your address on the computer to list your property on there. So it's doesn't require any skill. You're five year old. Um, so the, so if you want to rent out one of your bedrooms, you need to come into the city clerk's office and get a license. In order to get a license, they will send out inspectors, inspectors from fire building and property standards. And uh, once they hear from them that everything is okay, a license would be issued. And you could rent out a bedroom in your house. And you can list that on Airbnb, you can list it on Verbo, you can list it on Flipkey or anyplace else you want to list it.
Without serving breakfast?
Without serving breakfast.
Okay, thank you. I might have a room downstairs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor La Coco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since there's motion on the floor, I would like to put a motion that we accept the report, the licensing report. But I would like to amend one thing is the um, the dollar amount on the licensing to change it from five hundred dollars to um, what the hotel would be at sixty five dollars. And um, when we change our fees, that they move the hotel and the VRUs move at the same pace, that there's not a great big discrepancy.
Okay, do we, do we have a second or for that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Excuse me, just so we're clear. So you're saying uh, accept, uh, receive the report. And but with the exception, change the city's uh, fee by law to establish a sixty five per year. Uh, same as a tourist home for the for the annual vacation rental license. Is that what you're suggesting? Just so I got
Correct. Correct. And and when the fee licensing by law changes that the VRUs and the tourist homes or motel amounts are the same all the time.
Okay, uh, I've got that. I got the motion second, and I'm gonna go to Counselor Cario, then Thompson. I just want to ask Count, um, uh, Mr. Hurlovich if he had any thought on that. And then I'm gonna go to Counselor Cario and then Thompson.
So, Mr. Mayor, the um, the report basically said that the council had waived all of its um, licensing fees for this year due to COVID to help businesses uh, just survive. And so we would not be charging a fee. And so the fee schedule wasn't going to be changed until the next amendment, which is basically the end of two thousand and twenty one. So um, that that is not an issue to delay charging that fee. So, uh, and the the fee was initially set up to um, help recover the cost of additional enforcement staff that had to be hired. Uh, the staff has been on um, you know, on the roster for the last three or four years. So we have the staff already in place. They're already on the payroll.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Cario and then Thompson. And then Mr. Todd.
Thank you, Worship. Your Worship, uh, the motion that Counselor La Coco put on the table ties this to I, I, there's nowhere in here that it says anything about hotels until Counselor La Coco brought that up. So I was not gonna declare a conflict, but if we're gonna tie this into uh, hotels and their fees and whatever, I'm gonna bow out and declare a conflict. And if that's the way this is going, I'm gonna have a conflict on that now. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor. Uh, Mr. Clerk, you have that? Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Thompson, then I'm gonna go to Mr. Todd.
Well, I think the fee is appropriate. Uh, the the staff works out how much it costs for the city to uh, give out licenses and all the staff involved. And I don't think five hundred dollars a year is out of line. And uh, I certainly wouldn't, so you, you, you can separate the motion. Two motions.
Uh, okay, we could do that. We could do that. Mr. Clerk, we can separate the two. So receive, and then the other one being the the licensing costs. Okay, I've got Counselor Strange.
Yeah, I I agree with Counselor Thompson, you know, at least until we start charging uh, for licenses again, I think it should go back up because if you charge someone sixty five dollars a year for a license and they're making a hundred and fifty dollars a night um, on on their Airbnb, no breakfast, uh, tourist sharing. God, I think everybody in the city will open up. It would be unbelievable. Why wouldn't you? It's, it would be so easy to make make money. And and you're not gonna pay staff and they're gonna have to go through all these license fees for sixty five dollars? I I can't support that, but I I could support the recommendation.
Okay, thank you for that. I've got uh, Mr. Todd, and then I go to Counselor Peter Angelo.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I just want to uh, just draw the counsel's attention. Um, you're really comparing apples and oranges because um, different tax class that hotels and motels are in. When you're dealing with the bed and breakfast, it's it's really a residential property that has a license. Uh, when you're a hotel or a motel, you have a completely different tax class that is paying significantly more taxes uh, because they're a commercial operation. So, you know, they're really not comparable in in the sense of of what kind of operation they truly are. And I think that's why our staff felt that that licensing fee, fifth five, five hundred dollars the first year as your startup and two hundred and fifty dollars each year thereafter for a residential property operation was was appropriate.
Hey, thank you for that. Uh, Counselor La Coco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason why I brought that up in in to be in line with the hotels is because when we, when we had all of the discussions about vacation rental units and Airbnbs, it was always that um, they were basically running an illegal operation and the motels had all of these different um, uh, levels and insurances and inspections that they were doing and the VRUs were not. So that's why I made the comparison that if we are going to look, look at them to be similar and provide the same uh, requirements, then I felt the fee should be very similar. So that's why I brought it up. Um, I I do, I do believe that if we find that there are a lot of issues, we can always up the fee later. But I don't think it's appropriate to start off with a high fee when we've been saying the whole time that they should be treated as a motel hotel um, and and do the same types of things and requirements. So that's why I brought it up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I was just gonna ask if staff could comment on um, how they got to that fee. Because a lot of times uh, staff operate based on cost recovery. And uh, if they're operating based on cost recovery and council doesn't impose that level of fee, that means that other people get charged or other people's tax dollars get used for for that purpose. So I mean, I was just gonna ask staff uh, on what basis they came up with the fee that they did.
Sure. Mr. Hurlovich.
Sorry, just had to unmute again. Yes, Mr. Mayor. So part of that fee is based on the um, the inspections that have to be done and the the time that it takes for the inspectors to go out there. That's the building inspectors, property standards, and the fire inspectors. So it was based on their uh, rate that uh, they would be paid to go out there and do the inspections.
Okay, Counselor Peter Angelo? That good? Okay, great. Any other questions or comments at this point? All right, so um, I, oh, Counselor Dubrowski.
And I'm not sure if we had done this already, but Counselor Thompson brought up a a good point about maybe separating the two motions. I'm not sure if that's still on the table. You were probably alluding to it, but not of your head, so I will be quiet and let you speak.
So all good, it's all good. So yeah, we're gonna separate the motion. So um, we'll call the first vote. The first first vote is to receive the report from staff. So we'll call, I need a motion. Uh, mover, so Counselor La Coco, can I get, okay. By Counselor Coco, second by Counselor Ainoni. Um, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of receiving the report? Okay, that's unanimous with a conflict declared by Counselor Cario. And then on the second one, uh, it's around the licensing cost. So uh, it, uh, the motion is to move it to sixty five dollars for the vacation rental in line with the um, B and B. Is that right, Counselor La Coco? Do I have that right?
Did you have a second or for that?
Uh, yeah, Counselor La Coco and Counselor Ainoni.
It was in line with the hotel licensing.
Okay, within in line with the hotel licensing. Okay. Um, motion by Counselor La Coco, second by Counselor Ainoni? Yes, okay. So we'll call that second vote.
Can I get a recorded vote?
Okay.
Recorded, yeah.
Caller, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, we just heard the motion from the mayor. Counselor Campbell?
Opposed.
Counselor Dubrowski?
Opposed.
Counselor Ainoni?
Can't hear you.
Counselor Ainoni?
In favor.
Uh, Counselor Cario has a conflict. Counselor La Coco?
In favor.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
No.
Counselor Strange?
Opposed.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
And Mayor Diodati?
I'm opposed as well.
Okay, so that motion is defeated. It would be appropriate then to get a recommendation to approve or a motion to approve the recommendation in the report. Uh, which then ties into the bylaw later on the agenda.
I saw move, yeah.
Okay, motion by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Strange. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and opposed? Uh, with one opposed. Okay, so now move on to item se- seven point nine. Uh, exemption request to two-year waiting period for a minor variance on Carlton Avenue.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Campbell. There's no discussion to that. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Consent agenda. What's the will of council?
Move the consent agenda.
Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Cario, that we move the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. So on to item nine. So we've got some resolutions here. Um, resolution by the city, most of these are received for information. Um, City of Welland uh, rescending the transfer of operating authority of the Niagara Central, their airport, basically. It's their airport. They don't want to upload.
Receive and file.
Thank you. Motion by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Strange, that we receive and file. All those in favor?
Yeah, can we, can we receive and file the first eight?
I think we could. So
Second.
Okay, okay. So let me first vote on the first one. All those in favor of the first one? Okay, thank you. Um, now the uh, the next seven. Uh, so there's a motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, and I will quickly touch on each one, uh, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion to that? Counselor La Coco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to talk about the regional correspondence one. Is that nine point eight? Can we pull that one?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll pull up to nine point seven. Okay, so we'll call the vote. All those in favor up to nine point seven. Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Uh, let's run through them. And then nine point eight. Okay, so Counselor La Coco, we're at nine point eight. There is five pieces of correspondence from the region.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question on the double direct counselor. So where does it stand then if the region is just receiving and filing it?
It's done.
Okay, thank you.
It's finished, yep. Okay, no problem. So can we receive uh, item nine point eight then? Motion by Counselor Cario, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. Uh, item nine point nine, flag raising request for Pride Week for June the first. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Campbell. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item nine ten, letter from the Attorney General um, regarding modernizing tools for regulation of alcohol. It's basically receive and file that they're giving authorities
Receive and file, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Second.
To massage their municipal uh, alcohol regulations. Uh, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo. That was seconded by, I'm sorry, um, I didn't see. Uh, second, Counselor Counselor Thompson. All those, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item nine eleven, resolution town of West Lincoln regarding navigable waters, uh, looking for motion to receive.
Your Worship, does planning have any comment on this?
Uh, Mr. Hurlovich, do you have any um, comment on the West Lincoln resolution to the province regarding the request to amend the Beds of Navigable Waters Act? I don't know if Mr. Hurlovich, if you looked at it or if you have any comment on it, or if you're even there right now.
Yeah, sir.
Just keep talking.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't, I didn't look at the report.
Okay.
Receive and file, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange, that we receive and file. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item nine twelve, correspondence from Ontario Clean Air Alliance. Uh, recommendation that we uh, receive.
Receive and file, Your Worship.
Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Cario. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item nine thirteen, food bank media release. Um, Niagara Food Banks raised concern over significant increase in the need for a motion to receive and file, I suppose. Counselor La Coco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I'll put the motion to receive and file. I just wanted to bring a couple of points. I did speak with the executive director. I sit on the board and I wanted to bring some attention to a few things that uh, tourism and the service industry has really been hit hard in this pandemic and um, we've seen five hundred and eighty seven new families for the first time come to Project Share. Thirty years ago, Project Share was put into place and it was supposed to be a temporary solution. Unfortunately, here we are thirty years later, u- utilizing the services. Um, Project Share, the word share, I don't know if a lot of people know what it means, but it's support, housing, awareness, resources, and emergency. And I just had two more points I wanted to bring up. Uh, the clients, like many residents, are sharing increased feelings of isolation. Our homeless clients especially have lost some of their their network of support, including places to go throughout the day without being able to stay at the library, coffee, uh, shops, et cetera. And uh, the Project Share pivoted to operate in safe, contactless way, and they're proud to say that they've never and they're proud to say that they've never closed the doors during the pandemic. Clients can pick up prepackaged food boxes between 10 a.m. to 3 p.m., Monday to Friday. Emergency support services are offered over the phone and in person by appointment when necessary. We have online registration forms now to make accessing services more accessible for new clients, and they've just la- launched a virtual campaign educating the community on how they can access services if they're struggling to meet their basic needs for the first time.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, that, that's great, thank you for that. So, the motion by Counselor Lukoko to receive the, uh, food bank, um, report, seconded by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Uh, item nine fourteen, provincial day of action on litter. Uh, looking for.
Receive for information, your worship.
Counselor, uh, Peter Angelo makes the motion, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that we receive and file. All those in favor? Unanimous, okay, yep, thank you. And then now we move on to resolutions. So we've got one resolution. And this is allowing pivotal fine homes to file an application to the Committee of Adjustment for development of their plan of vacant land condominium. Looking for a motion? Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you. Uh, in camera, uh, Mr. Clerk.
Your worship, uh, council met earlier this afternoon for a in-camera meeting. And bear with me as I read through, uh, just a lengthy list here of some of the direction that was given at that meeting. First of all, that the city accept the offer in conveyance of land, uh, two thou- sorry, $244,230 plus HST, subject to adjustments, to purchase Part Nine on reference plan fifty-nine R one six seven eight three within the Montrose Business Park. Secondly, that the city accept the offer of $270,000 plus HST to purchase Part Ten on reference plan fifty-nine R one six zero two eight, also within the Montrose Business Park. Thirdly, that the city accept the offer of $206,000 plus HST to purchase Parts Eleven and Fifteen on reference plan fifty-nine R one six zero two eight within the Montrose Business Park. Uh, next, that direction be given to staff to report back on the Chippewa Town Hall update. Next, that direction be given to staff, uh, regarding options to repurpose lands owned by the city along the Hydro Corridor from Kayla Road through to Charn Road Avenue. And lastly, that there be direction to staff to offer comments to the Ombudsman's Office with regards to a preliminary report that council received this afternoon.
Thank you, looking for a motion to ratify in-camera? Counselor, uh, Cario, seconded by Counselor Inoni. All those in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you for that. And now bylaws. Counselor Peter Angelo. Uh, motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that the bylaws be given a first, second, and third reading. All those in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you for that. Now we go into new business. Counselor Cario?
Thank you, your worship. Um, I've had some calls from some farmers out in the South End, uh, about some flooding, and I just wonder whether Mr. Nichol would, uh, follow up on it for me and, um, maybe, I know that some of them have talked to, uh, Mr. Lane. It's the one in particular I got, uh, some concern about is out in Willadell, Willadell Road flooding. And what the farmers are suggesting that when they have a complaint about, about flooding, uh, it's real, it's real serious, uh, situation, and we need to jump on it ASAP. Because if we don't get rid of the water, uh, they can't get on the property to plant, to get their crop in. If, if they've already planted in the fall, then if it's, the land is flooded and they can't get the water off, uh, it's gonna ruin their crop. So I'd just like to know if Mr. Nichol could have a look into it for us and maybe get back to us and, uh, make sure that if we get those situations, we jump on them right away so that the farmer doesn't lose the whole season.
Mr. Nichol, he's got his jacket off already, he's getting comfy.
He, he's put his boots on, he's getting ready to go and check the flooding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd trust him, I'd love to. Um, I'd be happy to take those if, uh, directly, if, if that's, if any correspondence you can send in my attention, I'll circle back with my team and, and get out there, make sure we meet and, uh, work on some solutions out there, so.
Thank you. Thanks, yeah.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Um, anything else? Okay, so we're good there. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I just wanted some clarification on number five for the in-camera. I thought there was another part of the motion that Counselor Thompson made.
Um, number five, Mr. Clerk? He's getting his notes ready.
Yeah, through you, your worship. Uh, for the sake of the ratification of, uh, in-camera minutes, uh, I, I kinda summarize it, just be direction to staff. We will capture that further direction in the minutes of that in-camera meeting.
Okay.
Counselor Peter Angelo, you're good?
Yeah.
Do you have some new business, Counselor Peter Angelo?
No.
You always have new business.
I did today, I already asked my question.
Wow. Play a lottery ticket, Mr. Clerk. Any other new business from council? Counselor Inoni and then Campbell.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just had the same question I asked two meetings ago. Um, I made a motion for the land acknowledgement to come back. Do we know when that's coming back? And I made, I, we had a conversation in regards to, uh, our code of conduct, relooking at our code of conduct and not coming back. That was four meetings ago. Uh, is there any way and get the, the return like Counselor Peter Angelo does? Because it seems his stuff's on the next agenda.
Well, the land acknowledgement, I, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we are working on it. And it's, uh, there's a lot of, I'll just say, uh, um, moving parts to it.
Can I ask who's work, can I ask who's working on it?
Our office is working along with, uh, the museum staff, and we're working with other, uh, city halls as well. So it's a collective effort. We're also working with some indigenous groups as well. So we're trying to come up with something that's inclusive. A lot of places have been changing their land acknowledgement because it was not proper for lots of different reasons. So we're, we're trying to get it right. So, um, that's why there's been some, uh, lag in getting there. And I think I mentioned to you before, the region has not been doing theirs as well. I understand there's some changes happening there, so we're, we're, they're doing some of their homework too. So we're trying to piggyback on what some of the other groups are doing to do their homework so we can get it right. So it's not off the radar. It's just, it's not as simple as just doing it. We're trying to do our homework, measure twice, cut once, kind of approach.
I do understand that, Mr. Mayor, but it's been three months.
I know, but I don't, it'll be as long as it takes. I mean, we're not, we, we can't rush people. We're trying to get through it and, uh, we're gonna get it right. So I'd rather get it right than, than rush it out the door and, uh, something that everybody will be comfortable and proud of. And I don't know, the other question you asked was about the, I'm sorry, the second thing you mentioned about.
We had, we had at one point, we had, uh, a revisiting of our code of conduct and it had been deferred. That was last year. And I asked, I think, three, four months ago, and it was supposed to be coming back, and we still don't have it back yet.
So our CAO's, uh, gonna speak to that one, so I'll pass that up to him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Counselor Inoni will have that report on the June first agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you for that. Any other new business? Uh, count, I, right, sorry, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, your worship. As you were aware, some time ago, we passed a motion to request that the Niagara Regional Council declare state of emergency on mental health, homelessness, and addiction, and asked that they pass this on to the Province of Ontario. The, uh, Regional Council refused to do that. There was a compromise. Um, Mr. Stephen Seuss, who, uh, I was working with on this motion, has presented to the federal government a, uh, petition E dash three, three, five, one. I'm making a notice of motion, uh, with respect to supporting this, and I'll bring everything forward for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor. We've got that notice of motion. All right, thank you for that. Any other new business? Okay, I, I do, I have one too, if I could.
Oh, thanks, Vic.
Um, I would, um, ask, uh, council to support that we ask staff to come back with a report on a green strategy for city vehicles, including electric vehicles and charging stations. Um, you know, GM recently announced that by 2035, which is right around the corner, GM will not be making gas-powered cars or trucks anymore. They'll be exclusively producing zero emission vehicles. And there's a number of other auto manufacturers that are, that are falling, uh, suit. So rather than, because currently we don't have any, uh, green or any electric vehicles, and we don't have the infrastructure. I know it's not a, a thing you make a game time decision. You have to plan it out. Also, I can share with the group, I've been in discussions with Tesla as of late about their charging station. We have a rapid electric charging station on, um, Montrose Road, right beside the Food Basics. That's the only one of its kind. It's a rapid electric charging station. It's the only one of its kind in the region. And a lot of cars go there because you can charge much faster than, you know, your home unit. It takes overnight, or that unit, in, uh, twenty minutes, half an hour, you can get a full charge. And they've got next generation chargers coming out that'll charge in the same time it would take you to fill up your gas tank. So they're coming a long way with the development of these vehicles. And I know that, uh, even the Hornblower, the Hornblower has an electric boat, and the Maid of the Mist has an electric boat. So I'm thinking we don't want to just all of a sudden have to be forced to jump into it. So, um, I would just ask that staff come back with a report on this and also, um, a, a fleet strategy on vehicle purchases whereby we can get better pricing. So, uh, I would make that motion, or I would ask council, someone could make that motion for me, because as the chair, I can't make that motion. So I've got, uh, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Thompson.
So moved, your worship.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for that. Is there any discussion? Uh, yes, Counselor Strange.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and, and forward-thinking, is this something that, and I'm not sure if would be something we could forward to the planning department? Because will developments start, um, offering these in their, in their buildings and whatnot? And maybe that's part of the development process, is having these charging stations, if that's the way of the future?
That's a great thing. So maybe we can ask Mr. Hrlavich, and that could be part of the strategy on this. Because it's funny you mention that. One of the developers that we met with uh, was saying that in the development, they're gonna have electric charging stations built right into it. Because that's the way, you know, uh, that's the way it's gonna, gonna go. So maybe ask Mr. Hrlavich if you're still on the line.
Because that could be part, you know, have they do, uh, the percentage goes to, uh, parking, percentage goes to, uh, to parks, and maybe you do have a slight percentage that goes to this type of thing, if it's, uh, if it's something we're looking into.
Yeah, and I understand other levels of government are kicking money in toward things like this too. So, uh, Mr. Hrlavich, are you still available by any chance? If you are, you're muted. It looks like you're still on, but you, you're muted. All right, maybe not. Okay, well.
Someone better go charge him up.
Maybe he's plugging his car in, yeah. So, okay, well then, uh, so if we, if we can just call that, uh, that motion then, and we'll send that to staff, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you for your support. And if there's no other new business, motion for adjournment. Counselor, well, Counselor Thompson, I've never seen you move so fast. Seconded by Counselor Cario, all those in favor? All right, we're adjourned, thank you. Have a good one. We'll see you at the next meeting.
Night, everybody.